During the declared emergency in the city of Toronto, Committee of Adjustment virtual public hearings are being conducted via WebEx, an online digital platform, and will be livestreamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel. These measures are necessary to comply with physical distancing requirements and a provincial order that limits attendance at public hearings. Gatherings, I should say. My name is Nancy Omen, and I will be chairing this hearing. Panel members participating via WebEx and who can be seen and heard are Lisa Valentini, Carl Kniffel, and Aaron Chang. City staff will be assisting us throughout the meeting, including moderating the WebEx platform. Agents, applicants, and other interested parties participating in this virtual hearing registered in advance and will be connecting through WebEx using a compatible electronic device. Their participation will be through audio only. We acknowledge that the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnaabe, the Chipewa, the Hananasane, and the Wendat peoples, and it is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the Credit. In accordance with Sections 45 and 53 of the Planning Act 1990 as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment for the city of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provision of the zoning bylaw that apply to the property, permission to extend or alter lawful nonconforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. Anyone who wants to receive a copy of the committee's decision for an application must submit a written request by email to the general email address for the Committee of Adjustment Toronto and East York District Office. Please include your name, address, and an email address. All Committee of Adjustment and T-Lab notifications and appeal updates will be sent by email only. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, decisions may be appealed to the Toronto local appeal body known as T-Lab, or in some limited circumstances to the local Planning Appeal Tribunal known as LPAT. Appeal instructions will be set out at the bottom of the committee's decision. Participants who have registered in advance will be connected to this virtual hearing and will be muted automatically upon entry. When your item is called, each participant will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. And I just want to remind people that if you are watching it on YouTube or on another device, that you please turn off the sound to mute because we get a lot of echoing. When an app where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant will proceed with his or her presentation if required. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter directly into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant or agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee, and I will comment when you're reaching the five-minute mark. When addressing the committee, please speak slowly and clearly state your name and address, and please confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. Where required, the applicant or agent will proceed first with the presentation of the application. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have completed their presentation. And when all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent will be unmuted and will have an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion, and the application will be taken into committee for a decision. Please note, the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application if substantially revised to ensure the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice are informed of the changes. Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, have the minutes of the last Committee of Adjustment public hearing been confirmed by the members?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Panel members and staff, are there any declarations of interests this morning? No?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, I believe there is a file to be closed, and are there any withdrawals?
The one that we have is a request to withdraw for 407 Huron Street. It was deferred on November 6th. The applicants no longer want to proceed with the application, and they would not be entitled to a refund.
Okay, so we'll need a motion to withdraw this 407 Huron Street without refund.
Madam Chair, I'll bring a motion forward for withdrawal of the application without a refund.
Okay, do I have a Mr. Kniffel, did you want to second that? I saw your hand go up. You're muted.
Nope, that's okay.
That's okay, okay. So seconded by Mr. Kniffel. And I believe that's everything, so we can, in terms of withdrawals or closures? We have a, I think it's item 16, we have a deferral for McMaster Avenue, number 14.
To reschedule, Madam Chair?
Yes, so if you would like to do the motion for that now, it will be sometime in 2021.
All right, so item number 16, 14 McMaster Avenue, they would like more time to work on the application, so we need a motion to defer including recirculation fees.
So moved, Madam Chair?
Okay, do I have a second or? Okay, so the motion to defer including recirculation fees moved by Mr. Kniffel, seconded by Ms. Valentini, all in favor. Okay, the motion has been unanimous.
Subject to the deferral fee.
Right, I did mention that, yeah, it's okay. Okay, so that was unanimously approved.
Okay, great, thank you.
All righty, so first item is item number one, number five Whittaker Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey site plan, floor plans, and elevations. We have a covering letter from John Formosa, the agent. We have correspondence between the agent and community planning, presentation materials also from the agent, correspondence in support from 671 Adelaide Street, two more form letters in support from 15 Whittaker and 682 Adelaide Street, as well as a 12 signature petition in support. Do we still have two speakers in opposition? Okay, can I have the agent please identify himself for the record?
Hi, my name is John Formosa, agent for the application.
Okay, Mr. Formosa, we do have two speakers in opposition, so can I ask you to do a presentation about the application? I noticed one variance, so if you can just let us know why you need the variance.
Okay, can I queue up the presentation we submitted?
Sure, staff will queue it up, and when it comes up, I'll start the clock, okay?
Okay.
All righty, you're ready.
Okay, so, thank you. Good morning, members of the committee. Yes, this is one variance we're requesting with a FSI instead of 1.0 to 1.38. If you look at the site plan here, five Whittakers, an existing two-story dwelling. What we're proposing is put a third story on the existing two-story plus a small three-story rear addition. It's three sides, one side is Whittaker Avenue, the second side, the east side, is a laneway as well as a parking lot, and the rear is also a laneway. And then there's, of course, the seven Whittaker, and the row of houses begin to the west. On the rear of the property, there's five-story buildings overlooking this property, as well as a building, the resident, five-story residential building to the southeast overlooking all of the rear yards here. Okay, we can go to the next slide. So this is basically the character of the neighborhood. We have a lot of three-story buildings, two to three stories, repurposed industrial buildings. The bottom right is the proposed rendering of the proposed addition to this building at the front. So you can see there's a mix of traditional buildings. There's more of an eclectic neighborhood with overlooks. There's a building there on three-story, the modern one on three-story, on 709, 711 Adelaide Street West, bottom center. There's actually a roof deck on top, it's like a glass railing, you can barely see it. So there's a lot of gentrification going on in this neighborhood right now. It's quite eclectic. So if you go to the third page, and then this is a view from, looking south from the front, from five Whittaker there, and the buildings beside it. Now if you look, there's a five-story residential building, it's kitty-corner to it, it's basically just across the laneway there, and it's looking, it's at the rear edge of the property, so it's looking all the way down the rear yards of these properties. As well, on the south side of King Street, you can see multi-story residential buildings with overlooks looking over the whole street as well. So this kind of gives you a good picture of the context of this property. Again, it's at the end of this kind of row of buildings. The two sides are wrapped around with a laneway on both sides. Now if we go to the next page, the FSI context map, we've mapped out just approvals that have been done by the committee, and some of them have been reinforced by decisions at T-Lab, and this is just looking at the FSI. So if we look at the number, what we've identified as two, three, four, and five, those are all on Whittaker, the same, sorry, two, three, and four are all on Whittaker. One's at 15 Whittaker was approved at 1.57, 26 Whittaker was at 1.5, and then we have 33 Whittaker was approved at 1.37, and around the corner at 86 Tecumseh was at 1.37. If you took at the ones in the immediate, what we would consider the immediate area here, on average of those that are 1.33 and up, recent approvals have been, or in the last 10 years, have been one average of 1.54. So what we're asking for is a FSI of 1.38, and we've discussed this and worked with community planning over about eight months to get to this, and that they're happy with as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Formosa. I'm gonna go to the opposition, there are two speakers, and then we'll have you back to rebut only to the issues raised, okay? All right, Ruth Comfort, are you on the line?
Oh, yes.
Okay, can I please have you identify yourself, name an address for the record?
Ruth Comfort, 86 Tecumseh Street.
Okay, I'm starting the clock, you have five minutes to state your opposition.
No, I don't, I'm not opposed to it, I'm just, I don't understand why they, did somebody say I was opposed to it?
Yeah, it shows here that you're speaking in opposition. Are you in support of the application?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so is there anything you wanted to say briefly then?
Not really, it's a very impressive, it's very impressive, the plan.
Okay, so in future, like, I don't know if you just wanted to watch, but you can just watch on YouTube channel, it's only people that want to speak that have to register.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, okay, well, thank you, yeah, thank you for your interest, okay? Okay, do we have Paul DeGinnis on the line?
Yes, I'm on the line.
Are you in opposition?
Not really, I just wanted to be able to use the platform because I would like to do something later, so basically, no, I'm not in opposition.
So you're just, you're just...
I do have a question, if that's, so my name is Paul DeGinnis, my address is 92 And I guess there's a question that I have in regards to the basement, but of course it's not something that you're considering, so I just wonder, within the whole plan, there is a, there is a lower addition to the garage, which to me seems that they will actually stop using the garage as a garage, and they will add something in the basement for whatever reason. So I just wonder whether that is true or not.
Okay, well, we can, I'll ask the applicant, although there is nothing related to the garage before the committee, but I will ask him to quickly answer.
I understand that.
Yeah, so I'll ask him to quickly answer that then, okay? Thank you. Mr. Formosa, can you just quickly answer that question that was just posed by Mr. DeGinnis? Thank you.
Sure, in the application you'll see that the garage is still being used as a two-car garage, and we're adding extra space underneath the garage. You just do that with a reinforced slab, that's all.
Okay, so thank you for that, and I'm assuming you can hear me, Mr. DeGinnis, so if you have any further questions, perhaps just take them directly to your neighbor and ask to speak to the agent. Okay, panel members, do you have any questions of Mr. Formosa?
I have one question, Madam Chair.
Okay, Mr. Kniffel, you have?
Mr. Formosa, the only property that would appear to be impacted by this proposal in a possibly negative way is number seven Whittaker, and I noticed that the owner of the property has not responded or has not raised any kind of objection. Can you advise whether or not there have been discussions with that person, and whether or not that person's onside?
Yes, thank you, your question. We've been there multiple times, and no answer to the door. Multiple times we've been there, documented, I've had staff go there, I think it was four times, or documented in our materials, and I've gone personally probably another six times at least. And there's no answer to the door. I can't do anything about somebody not coming to the door, and don't know why, maybe it's the COVID stuff, I have no idea, but we've tried this over multiple months.
Fair enough, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? Panel members seeing none. Okay, we'll take it into committee. Maybe unmute yourselves. Are there any comments and a motion?
Madam Chair, I think based on, there's one variance here, and based on the FSI variance, I did note that the existing property is already over the FSI in minimum, or required, maximum in the bylaws, sorry. And we've also seen that there are other FSIs similar or greater than that's being asked for in this application. I feel, in my view, what is being proposed is in keeping with what is going on in the neighborhood. It is a three-story addition, it is setback, I noted. So I'm in favor of the application, and I'm happy to bring a motion forward for approval of the application without any conditions.
Okay, go ahead.
So it's a motion for approval.
Okay.
My motion is for approval, thank you.
All right, do I have a second or two?
I'm happy to second it. I thought that the only possible problem with this might be overlook, but as the applicant has so clearly illustrated, the existing condition has five-story buildings around it, so overlook is already an issue. The most impacted property is number seven, who the applicant has made every effort to contact without success. I think this is a rather minor variance, and I don't see there being any negative impact on the community, so I'm happy to second the motion.
All right, I have a motion to approve moved by Ms. Valentini, seconded by Mr. Kniffel, all in favor. The application has been unanimously approved, thank you. Item number two, 782 St. Clair Avenue West. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. We have 12 photographs showing the subject property at Street View, along with the existing and proposed site plan, Street views to Arlington Avenue, and aerial photographs of St. Clair Avenue West. Correspondence in opposition from 780 St. Clair Avenue West and 23 Atlas Avenue. And do we have two speakers already? Can I have the agent please identify herself for the record?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Idi Evangelista, on behalf of the owners of 782 St. Clair.
Okay, thank you. We have two speakers enlisted in opposition, so I'll ask you to give us a brief presentation, please, and let us know why you need the variances.
Okay, so this area is zoned multi-commercial residential with a total density of 5.0 and a height of 24 meters. We are requesting an addition to this property to allow for four units, one two-bedroom and three one-bedroom. The existing situation as it is today, the building extends to the rear lot line, and it is .21 setback from the rear lot line, and as we are proposing to today, the situation is much better than what the existing situation is. We have worked with transportation, so we have repositioned the stairs, we pushed back the back wall, and it is, will allow for a lot more space in the rear. We do have a variance for parking, but if you refer to in the package that I provided on page six, you'll see that this area is well-served by TTC, bike lanes, parking within the neighborhood. And I respectfully submit, I reached out to the neighbors, I dropped off packages to the residential homeowners, I felt they would be impacted. I did not hear back from any of the residents in behind. I am aware that there are two letters of opposition on either side of 782. However, I may add that, you know, this is a north-south facing building, the sun rises in the east, quite high during the summertime, sets in the west, and I respectfully submit that I don't feel that neighboring properties will be impacted. And as you will see from photos that I submitted, you'll see that there are three-story buildings, apartment buildings, condominiums within this neighborhood, and there are also on Arlington, there's three stories. And with this, Madam Chair, I respectfully submit that this application does meet the forecast.
Thank you, Ms. Evangelista. We'll have you back after we hear from the two objectors to address the issues raised. Okay, do I have Franca? I have Franca on the line, can you please identify yourself, name an address for the record?
It's Frank Edgert, and my husband Alex Usher, and we're at 134 Arlington Avenue.
All right, I'm starting the clock now, you have five minutes to state your objections.
Okay, well, the building as it stands, the proposal as it stands right now actually doubles the volume.
Sorry, okay, I'm just gonna reset the clock here, so both of you are, who's speaking? Is it one of you or both of you?
The person who's speaking needs to identify themselves, and we ask that it be one person at a time, and not two people presenting one view.
Okay, and just to add to that, if both of you intend to speak, you have five minutes between the two of you. So we're gonna start over, so I'm restarting the clock now. Who speaks? Are you speaking, Mr. Usher, or is Franca speaking?
Yeah, I will speak, thank you.
Okay, so I'm starting the clock now. Sorry, sorry, can you just officially, for the record, state your name and address?
Alex Usher, 134 Arlington Avenue.
Great, now we're good to go.
Okay, so this property actually overlooks directly into our backyard, well, it doesn't at the moment because it's got a setback, and it's, the second story's setback, and it's only one story. The proposal suggests actually doubling the volume of the building, so they're going from two stories to three stories, and there's no more setback. There are no other buildings on the north side of St. Clair between Arlington and Atlas, which are more than two stories. There are no other buildings along that stretch where the, where there is no setback. So this is quite a different kind of building that you're talking about here, right? So I think it does, I'm not convinced that it meets the streetscape test, and I, you know, I think, you know, I mean, in theory, I'm not sure what the proponents' question was there about north-south, I assume it has to do with where the windows are placed, but very clearly those windows are placed to look directly into our property. And there's really nothing you can do about that, I mean, I suppose you could put up some extra screening or something like that, but that would presumably put them in violation of the massing rules, so I don't, I'm not really sure what you can do about that. Yeah, our fence is as high as it can be, we have no way of protecting ourselves against that, you know, that, on privacy grounds, there's nothing we can do about it, because it's already 27 feet, and we've got cedars that go, you know, maybe a foot taller than that behind it. So I mean, I think that's, I mean, that's, it's pretty simple. This is, this is, will be very, very different from anything else on that block, and it affects our, I think it affects the value of our property quite a bit.
Okay, panel members, do you have any questions of the speaker?
No.
Seeing none. Okay, thank you, Mr. Usher. We'll now go to Mr. Rocco Santo. Are you on the line, sir?
Hello, yes, good morning, panel. This is Nick Rocco Santo, do you hear me?
Sorry, can you, yeah, I can hear you. Can you please identify yourself, name an address for the record?
I'm Nick Rocco Santo, I'm the owner of 780 St. Clair, right next door to the proposed plans.
Okay, I'm starting the clock now, you have five minutes.
Okay, well, the proposed setback from the building, this, they're adding three apartments up there, the setback's supposed to be 7.5 meters to allow for parking and whatnot. There's already a parking issue in the area, this, by bringing up two extra floors on the, on that corner, at the back especially, you create total shade, you put my building in total shade, and there's a lot of ice, and I'm already dealing with ice. My insurance premiums have gone up 25% this year, and I have stairs that access the back, and I have parking at the rear. I have, my tenants are constantly accessing the back, and it's important, like, this shade, because the west is important, if you've got more ice, there's more of a risk for slip and fall, and God forbid that there's a slip and fall event here, you put my building at risk, and I won't even get insured. Also, my kitchen, I just renovated my kitchen a couple of years ago, and it has an unobstructed west view, and that's the whole beauty of the apartment. Now, if somebody builds two floors up, another 20 feet, plus a staircase above that, which is another nine feet, they're looking into a block wall. That makes my apartment less desirable, who would want to rent it? That's gonna make it more difficult for me as a landlord to keep it, keep it filled, and to attract tenants and the proper tenants. And if that happens, you know, I still gotta pay the taxes, I gotta keep the place going, and I don't want to lose my tenants over this. I mean, who would want to look at a block wall? Anybody could argue, oh, the condominium's, you know, blocked the view all the time, but there's at least, there's a building in between, there's a good 20 feet or something. Here, we're looking into a block wall two feet away, which brings in another issue. I have a lower commercial, on the lower level, there's a commercial roof, my building is set in about two feet on the second floor, which allows for the two windows to have an unobstructed view. Now, if you build up that wall another 20 feet, I'm gonna have a big channel there, like a cavity, think of a cavity of a tooth, where all that snow's gonna build up and create ice. I have had up to six inches of ice in the past there, which had to be removed and broken just to allow the water to flow, because it doesn't matter if it's a new roof or old roof, the membrane will crack if you have so much ice buildup. So if you have a 20-foot wall, right now there's a parapet wall, which is only about three feet above, and there already is a channel, and if you build up that foot, that wall, 20 feet, which is another two apartments above, you're gonna have a huge gap there for snow and ice to build up, which is gonna cause a nightmare for maintenance. And also the parking, we've had issues with parking with neighbors for the longest time, and I'm tired of dealing with neighbors who illegally park the back of my property, and you're adding three apartments with no parking, and parking is an issue in the whole area, and I'm the, in any case, it's, and you know, like, you just invite people to park illegally, which really aggravates my tenants, and in the end, you know, it's important to keep this building viable, and I have to keep it rented because the taxes are very high, and you know, and I can't afford to have people move out because of frustrations over ten, over people parking, or whatever the case may be, or ice. I mean, there's all kinds of issues. Also, there is no other building in the whole block, as the gentleman mentioned, from Arlington all the way to Atlas, that is three stories. This is the only one, and this is gonna, you know, it really, it's gonna affect my property value. I mean, it may increase, it'll also distort the tax base, because, you know, they use market value assessment. And so, you know, you could, you could argue, oh, well, you pass it on to the tenant, well, you know, the tenants are struggling already through COVID, and we've had to work with them just to keep them going, otherwise they'll go broke. Now, you know, how do they even propose to make, to do an addition when there's a restaurant operating? That's gonna cause a major disruption, a disruption that, you know, how are these guys gonna operate? How are you gonna end up having stores that are empty, like Eglington and the Danforth? I mean, you know, three stories is quite a, quite a large height. Right now, there's only one story, the building ends, their apartment above ends at approximately the same point where my apartment ends. You bring it right to the back... You bring it right to the back with no parking, you make my apartment and my building undesirable. Even if I wanted to turn around and sell in the future...
Mr. Rocco Santo, sorry to cut you off, but you're over five minutes. Can I ask you to wrap up, please?
Okay, all I wanted to say is, look, even if I wanted to turn around and sell this building in the future, any investor will look at this very negatively and say, I don't want to buy this building. There's going to be too much maintenance issues, and who wants to buy a building that looks into another block wall, especially an apartment? The beauty of the apartment is the, is the view. You take away that view, the apartment is worthless.
Okay, thank you. Panel members, any questions of the speaker? Seeing none. Ms. Evangelista, can I ask you to speak only to the issues that have been raised by the opposition?
Yes, Madam Chair. Okay, I did reach out to the neighbors behind, as I mentioned. I left a package at 134 Arlington, so I'm slightly remiss that, you know, they haven't reached out to me. So 134 Arlington, there is an addition at the back of their home with no windows. The two windows that they do have on that side facing the laneway are closer to the front, or at the front of the house. Right now, I understand and appreciate that it is not a three-story building at this time, but the building envelope itself does project and is closer to the rear lot line than it would be. We are setting the house, we are setting the building back quite a bit. Now, as for the, as for the sunlight, and, you know, as I mentioned, it's, you know, it's on St. Clair, it's east-west, the, the rear of the property is north, the, the front of the property is south, you know, the sun set, or sorry, rises in the east, sets in the west. It's quite high in the summertime, yes, in the wintertime, the sun is a little bit lower. As for ice damming, that most likely could be as a result of the insulation or the roof, how it's laid. Unfortunately, I cannot speak to that. And there, the buildings on that block, this would prob, this, yes, is the first building that we are increasing to three, but I have to, I have to respectfully submit that as a right, this is an area we can go 24 meters in height, a total density of five. This is a multi-commercial residential area. As you see across the street, and right at the corner of Arlington and St. Clair, which is a stone throw from, from this property, it is a three-story building, which I've included in the photos. There are tall buildings along the, the whole stretch. There's parking. Most of the people that will be living on this roof, they take the streetcar, they take TTC, they ride a bike, all of which will be provided within the building for storage, should they have bikes. So they, these will be all things that will be mentioned to the tenants when they do move in. And the area is well-serviced by, and this is why, you know, everybody wants to live in the city, it's serviced by TTC. You now have and are free to ride your bikes, there's bike lanes everywhere. Again, respectfully submit, this, this does meet the four tests. We are building, our addition is well below what we are entitled as a right. And I don't respectfully believe that, you know, with 134 on that side, there, that wall, they have no windows on that wall. So overlook and onlook is in the city, it goes, it's both ways. So again, does this meet the four tests? I believe it does.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Evangelista. Panel members, do you have any questions of the agent?
I have one question, Madam Chair. The, the person speaking from 134 Arlington indicated that this property would have the smallest rear yard setback of any property in the row. I'm wondering about that, because it appears to me that 774 and 778 also extend to very, very near the rear lot line. Is that your understanding as well?
There are many homes that, there are many homes that are above the rear lot line, all, all along St. Clair. And as you see, through you, Madam Chair, I did include the existing site plan and the proposed site plan, and you'll see the envelope and how we've set it back. And I've also, on page seven, is an aerial of buildings on St. Clair, and you'll note that majority do about the rear lot line.
Thank you.
Any further questions, panel members?
Hi, it's Aaron. I do have one question to reply to. So throughout this process, have you been talking to any planning staff about the development?
Are you there, Ms. Evangelista?
Through you, Madam Chair. My apologies, I missed that question.
The question is, through the process, have you been dealing with planning staff? I believe that was the question.
I have, yes, I have. I've dealt with planning staff, I dealt with transportation, engineering, and everybody, all departments are all on board. And as I mentioned on my presentation, transportation and I worked very closely in setting the building back, further back from the laneway, repositioning the rear stairs, and they, and as you see, no staff have written any comments. Everyone's in support.
Any, any further questions, panel members?
No.
Seeing none, we'll take it into committee.
Madam Chairman, I'm inclined to support this application. There was a lot of objection to the height. Height isn't one of the variances before us. The variances that are before us are setback variances, and it seems to me that the setbacks that are being requested are reasonably consistent with what already exists in the area and on neighboring properties. I don't think that the variances as implicated, implemented, will create a negative impact on the community, and therefore, Madam Chairman, I'm inclined to support the application.
Okay, are there any further comments? If not, we can go with the motion. Okay, Mr. Nipfel?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to move approval of the application without conditions. I believe that, notwithstanding the concern for height, the variances that are requested are not substantial, and they will not result in a negative impact in the community.
Okay, do I have a second or for that motion?
I'll second it, Madam Chair.
Okay, motion to approve, moved by Mr. Nipfel, seconded by Ms. Valentini, all in favor. The application has been approved unanimously. Thank you, everyone. The next item is item number three, 151 Augusta Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, and no further correspondence. We have listed the agent, Mr. Footman, as speaking, as well as Mr. Crowe, or the solicitor. Now, who's going to be speaking? I'm not sure who I've got on the line here, but I guess we only need one of you.
Hi, my name is David Footman. I'll be speaking, and if there's clarification required, the lawyer will speak after.
Okay, I think we'll actually go straight to questions. Panel members, do you need a presentation?
No.
No, so are there any questions?
I have a question. Can you, Mr. Footman, can you just clarify the existing FSI for the property?
Existing? I don't actually have the exact number in front of me, but we are removing part of the third floor and building a partial fourth floor, so it would be a little bit less.
So what do you mean? Do you have a number?
I don't have that number in front of me, no. What's the number?
Oh, it looks like we've got the number here up on the screen under the stats. So is the existing 960.6 meter square for the, I guess that's the GFA?
That's right, that's the GFA. And we're going to 1294.
Okay, and I'm just looking at the variances then. How does that translate into FSI? It just looks like the...
It's the basement that also increases it, because we are proposing commercial use of the basement, so that would be included.
I see. So when, when I'm looking at the variances, I was confused by the numbers and then the variances proposed. For example, your first variance is maximum improvemented non-residential FSI is, you know, 608.26 meter square. And then I noted that the whole building already is 960.6 meter square. So is that because, like, it's already over what you're requesting? Is that because it doesn't include the entire residential FSI? I was getting confused with the, the various FSI's being requested and how that fits in. Can you explain that to me?
Well, this was...
If that's possible?
Yeah, I don't know. This was prepared by city staff over the two zoning bylaws. I think the plans are pretty clear about the proposal.
Because they include the ground floor and basement, so they might double that.
So non-residential area, we've got 1.899 times, which is basically, you know, almost twice the lot area. And then on residential, it is almost the same. Well, no, we're at, what are we at? We're at 1.89... 2.295.
So just so I can clarify how much is being added to the building, I noted in my notes that the existing is 960.6 meter square, and you're requesting 1294 meter square, is that right? Just so I know how much overall you're adding, and whether it's non-residential or residential becomes confusing in the, in the variance request. But is that correct? You're adding just over 300?
Yes, Madam Chair, variance number six is sort of for the entire building, regardless of how it's all split up.
Ah, thank you, okay.
And right now, according to their site stats on their site plan, they're saying that they're three times the area of the lot existing, and then they're going to be going to four plus.
Okay, thank you, that clarifies it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions, panel members? No further questions?
Just a question about how many new residential units are you creating in this development?
There are nine units, and we're maintaining the nine units. So we're just reconfiguring the building to remove the illegally built third floor and provide a small fourth floor. Thank you.
All right, I'm, Mr. Nipfel, Ms. Valentini, you're looking very intense. Are there any further questions? Because if not, we can go into committee.
There's a lot, there's a lot of numbers. I have, I had the same problem as Lisa.
So I don't see any further questions. We'll take it into committee. Do you have another question? Yeah?
I, I do, so I'm just clarifying, you're removing part of the third floor that looks like it's at the back of the property, existing 96 is being removed, and you're reconfiguring and adding partial fourth floor, correct? That's how I understood it?
Yes.
Okay, just to make sure I'm on the same page, and like I said, the numbers, the numbers were confusing, but if you're not adding, I don't think as much as it appears in the numbers, so I just wanted to be clear on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we good to go into committee, or, Mr. Nipfel, do you have a question?
No, I'm good.
All right, so we'll go into committee then. Discussion.
Madam Chairman, I, I think the, the questions were very helpful. I think the variances in, the numbers in the variances are misleading. It sounds like this building is going to be a lot bigger than it actually is proposed. As it is, I think the variances are reasonable, as interpreted by the proposal. I think that this is a fairly eclectic area with a wide range of building forms and densities and so forth. I think as such, this proposal is consistent with the area, and I would move approval without conditions.
Okay, do I have a second or?
I, I agree with those comments, and thank you for the clarification. I, I do know that the fourth floor is setback, so I do think any impact will be minimal, and I don't believe there's a variance for height in any event. So I'm happy to second the motion for approval.
Okay, motion to approve, moved by Mr. Nipfel, seconded by Ms. Valentini, all in favor. The application has been unanimously approved. Thank you. Item number four, 457 Queen Street East. The committee has before it a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, a presentation package from Mr. Race, the agent, email correspondence from Transportation Services, and we have a report from Planning asking for conditions, and Forestry is asking for condition number two. And we also have communication from Heritage Preservation Services, correspondence in opposition from number 459, and we showed two people speaking in opposition. Okay, do I have the agent on the line? Okay, Mr. Fodrick, are you there?
I am. May I begin?
Yeah, just start with your name, well, you know the drill, your name, and, and then I'll, I'll start the clock after that.
Thank you. So my name is Mike Fodrick, I'm the lawyer for the applicant, I'm from McCarthy-Tetra, I've been in front of the committee a few times before. The project is 457 Queen Street East. It's a south side of Queen Street, just east of Parliament, it's about 15 minutes walk to the, the middle of the downtown core, for those who know it. The proposal is to renovate and preserve an existing heritage building, and to do what I would like to call gentle infill, to add three residential dwelling units for a total of four units. There was a presentation, and I see it's pulled up on the screen, and as you go through, I think, I urge you to have a close look at the, the images, because they've been thoughtfully selected to make a number of points. I'll just tell you that the key takeaways, I think, from those images are, as you flip through it, this is an irregularly shaped lot, which has triggered a whole bunch of variances, which, which one would normally see, given what this proposal is. Secondly, that, another key takeaway, I think, is that the official plan designates this a mixed-use area. Queen Street is an avenue, even more so, which is, you know, not something you often see when we're doing gentle residential infill. This is a, Queen Street is a higher-density sort of street. Another thing you're going to see as you look through those documents is that we are surrounded by a number of larger buildings, people who've done townhouses, and I think in some cases condos and whatnot, and there's some isometric images that really depict that well. And then the other key takeaway, and you'll see, is that there's been a great effort made to maintain the integrity of the heritage structure. And, and that's why City Planning, I think, City Heritage, first of all, has written saying they have no concern, we work carefully with them, and there's an effusive report from City Planning, not just no objection from City Planning, but effusive report from City Planning, which, which does a better job than I can, underscoring sort of why they believe it meets the four tests. There's, of course, all those conditions, the one from Planning, the one from Forestry, we're completely in agreement with those. Going through the variances, I'm just going to go through them in order, even though it's not necessarily the most logical way to think about them, just so people can follow. The first one deals with secondary suites, and this is a frustrating variance for me. There's a number of variances on here related to secondary suites. It's a frustrating variance, because there are some city zoning examiners, unfortunately, who continue to call up these variances, even though we're not proposing any secondary suites. As, as the package elaborates on, secondary suite has a definition, a very clear definition under bylaw 569 2013. It refers to a dwelling unit located within another dwelling unit. We're not proposing any of those. All of our dwelling units are standalone dwelling units, each with their own entrances, very conventional in that respect. So, so the, the number of variances here that really, that address secondary suites really frankly don't apply to us. However, they're on here, we decided that, you know, it'd be easier just, rather than arm wrestle with the examiner over that, to go ahead, because even if they do apply, as I think you can see, and perhaps may even be self-evident, that they are, you know, we do meet the intent and purpose even with those variances incorporated. So the very first one being, the secondary suite shall not exceed 45% of the building area, we have 67%. Well, obviously, we have no secondary suites, but, but even at 67... Well, obviously we have no secondary suites, but even at 67%, we're quite close. The second variance relates to FSI, and I know I'm speaking quickly, but I'm conscious of my time. 2.0 as of right, 2.71 is permitted, as I think is self-evident just by a glance, the irregular lot dimensions here don't do us any favors. They cause this variance to look bigger than it is. They're probably non-existent or close to it if we had a regularly shaped lot. There are other approvals by the committee. 463 Queenies, just a couple of doors down is notable, which produces almost the exact same built form as this. And again, this is an avenue in the official plan, a place where the official plan explicitly contemplates, you know, in a mixed-use area in the avenue, the highest density are going to take place. And so if anything, this is frankly an underdevelopment of the site, given that it's on an avenue of Queen Street East, 15 minutes to downtown. But again, respecting the heritage structure, this is a gentle infill sort of attempt to create some density. The number of secondary suites, there's a variance for that. Again, I'm not going to elaborate on what I said about secondary suites. Again, I'm going to say that apartment building is permitted as of right in this zone. The alterations in question, and there are a couple of variances that deal with alterations, you know, we had to respect the heritage structure. That was a non-starter to affect that for us. It was a non-starter for city planning and heritage staff. So you'll see that dormer that's added, that triggers this variance. Likewise, there's a variance later on related to first floor height. Well, you know, that concept, it says there's a minimum first floor height at variance six of 4.5 meters and we have less. Well, that's because they contemplate a commercial first story on avenues like this and we have a residential first story, which is the existing heritage structure. So we're maintaining the existing and that's appropriate given that it is a heritage structure. I could go on, I'll just say briefly about parking before my time runs out, that in respect to parking, there is a variance for parking, but there is no way we're going to, you know, create a garage in the heritage structure. There's no laneway access from this property. This is 15 minutes to downtown. Very, I mean, we use transit oriented, we overuse that, but this is a true transit oriented area.
I know you're flying through, but just letting you know you're at 520, so if you can...
Perhaps in response, I'll be, I'll just, perhaps in the response, I'll be able to address if there's, I could go on, but I'll address more in the response perhaps, assuming that issues are raised.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do I have Remy Leclerc and Stephanie Barbosa on the line?
Yes, we're here.
Okay, which one of you is speaking?
Stephanie.
Okay, can I have Stephanie identify herself, name and address for the record, please?
Stephanie Barbosa, 457 B Queen Street East.
Okay, Stephanie, I'm starting the clock now. You have five minutes.
Okay. Yeah, I wanted to address the parking issue. We live, you know, adjacent, we live in the townhouses adjacent to where this project is going to be. And currently, one of us uses street parking and find it very challenging to find, you know, permit street parking, given that there are just so many people that are, you know, also having permits within the area. In fact, you can't even get a temporary permit if you wanted to get one for somebody, say, staying overnight for a few days. That's how little parking there is in the area. So if this was going to be a single-family unit home or a single-unit home, perhaps that wouldn't be such an issue. But, and I understand that there probably isn't space for it to have, of course, a garage. But my, yeah, my issue is that where are the people going to go? I know you say people take transit, but that's not guaranteed. That's not baked into, you know, the agreement of somebody moving into this property.
Okay, thank you. After the second person has stated her objections, then the applicant will come back and address your parking issue, okay? Thank you. Do I have Ms. Chu on the line?
You do.
All right, can I also have you state your name and address for the record, please?
Stephanie Chu, 459 Queen Street East.
Okay, I'm going to start the clock now. You have five minutes.
All right. So I'm the direct next door neighbor on the left-hand side of the applicant and I just want to talk about several concerns I have to the actual application, which proposes an additional eight meters to the existing house, so a three and a half meter variance, to turn this into kind of four units of three bedrooms each. There's no house with this level of density on this row of townhouses today. It's mainly single-family units, maybe a couple of multifamily units turned into two units. A few concerns that I have, the first is, the proposal is going to cast a big shadow directly onto my backyard, which obviously changes both how I can use my backyard, but possibly also future property value here. And also, I worry about the privacy implications of having an onlooking rooftop patio. I also have the same density concerns around parking as previously just described by the other objection. I'm on the list myself for a permanent parking spot, not a spot, but a permit, and have not been able to get one for myself, let alone for temporary guests. And it's a huge hassle already from a density perspective, even to find a parking space if I need to bring groceries home. That's another major concern. I also think, this is a lot of people, the proposal contemplates up to 12 people on a really, what is actually a pretty small lot, that could, that number could actually go up if they rent it out to, if they rent out each bedroom to multiple people, i.e. couples. I think I'm particularly concerned both with the parking in density and also impacts me because the separate entrances around, the separate entrances will share one common staircase, which I will share a common wall. So I'm probably going to hear people going up and down the staircase all day, especially if each of these units has the density that is proposed. So that's everything.
Okay, thank you. Panel members, do you have any questions of either of the two speakers? Seeing none, okay, thank you very much. Can I have Mr. Fodrick back?
Right. There was a, thank you for that. There was an image of the isometric views of the block in question, it was part of the presentation. I could beg your indulgence to call that up again because I think the image speaks for itself. There was, one of the comments made was that there's nothing else like this in the neighborhood and I think that isometric view clearly demonstrates that there is. That's not the one, it should be above that one if you scroll up. There, well, that will do it, right? So if we look at the bottom document, the blue is obviously our property. You'll see two or three properties to the east, 463 Queen's, which is an approved, under construction project right now, approved by committee variant. Again, slightly more massive than ours. Immediately behind is a four-story or so townhouse project, right? And then immediately to the west, you see much denser townhouses than anything contemplated in this area. So I don't think it's fair to characterize this as, you know, one of a kind or something that's new to the area. Again, this is a CR zone where apartment buildings, five units or more, are permitted use as of right. This is, again, not just a CR zone, this is, this is a, being an avenue, being a mixed-use hotel is permitted as of right. Not that we're proposing a hotel, because we're not, these are dwelling units. So I hardly think that that concern about density is a legitimate one. Again, we're trying to preserve the heritage structures here. If not for the heritage structures on this particular block, this would probably be a block that was a candidate for redevelopment where we would have a mid-rise building going up, just like you, it's made very clear in the planning staff report. The point about parking, I said something about it. Again, we hear some people refer to, you know, in far-flung reaches of the city there being a transit-oriented area. This is a true transit-oriented area. You can literally walk 15 minutes to Young and Queen. So, you know, and again, to provide parking on this site, it's just not a realistic possibility as you can see with no direct laneway access and realistically no way to affect the heritage building. I don't think it's practical to put parking on this site. So then the question, if we want to respect the heritage building, you know, are we saying then that redevelopment is frozen in the area? That no, because one can't provide a parking spot, no development is possible? No, I don't think that's right. And I think that especially when we are adding tenants, especially in this area where it's not just walkable to downtown, but bikeable, et cetera, and transit, et cetera, it's very reasonable to advertise a unit with no parking. And so I think that is appropriate. Maybe not in every area of the city, but it is in this one. In terms of shadows, I completely disagree and I think that isometric view may intuitively, for those who know shadows, demonstrate this itself. And I've prepared a shadow study, which if I had been in person at the committee today, I could put up on the screen right now. But the impact of our building, especially the variances, are de minimis on the shadow on the neighbor to the east. And I think intuitively, just looking at this isometric view, as I think anyone who knows shadows would agree, and I think you guys do because you see shadows all the time, given that the sun does shine from the southeast to the southwest in Toronto, that large four-story building immediately behind both of our backyards obliterates the sun in both backyards. So we are not even duplicating that, you know, the damage is done, it's done by that building. And so, you know, the incremental is almost de minimis, I would say, for the purposes of our shadow. So again, unless we're going to dip the neighborhood in amber, we have done really the best job possible in regards to the shadows and it's de minimis, the impact on the neighbor in particular. Again, this being a CR zone, and again, a CR zone at the rear, so to the extent that there is a variance at the rear for setback, it's noteworthy that the building at the rear is also a CR zone. So it's not as if there is a relationship to a neighborhood here, which I also think is worth mentioning. There was a comment about a shared wall. I would consider that a building code issue. I would assure anyone, including the neighbor, that this will be built to code, the city will ensure that. So in terms of noise separation and fire separation and all that, that's necessary for a shared wall condition, it'll be built to the best standards in the Ontario Building Code. And so I think they should have comfort that we're, you know, insofar as this is not a, you know, a concern of the building code likewise, in this case, it will not be something that is, that is a problem I don't expect for her. I'll just add one more nuance here because there is a couple of quirky variances. Again, the irregular lot line not just generates a slightly higher FSI, as been talked about, but also, you know, some of the windows that face each other, like they, it's only because it's an irregular lot pattern that they're triggered. Anyway, so I would urge you to read the planning staff report and I would urge, and my final comment is this, the planning staff report says a lot of effusive things about the project, but one of my favorites is where it says, "The variance related to the side setback and setback between the main windows are acceptable to staff as they reflect the configuration adjacent property provides additionally within the proposed dwelling units." And they say, "Staff note that the proposed rear setback variance is consistent with recent approvals on the block and will result in a comparable building depth." So I would rely not just on one's own eyes looking at the isometric view, but I rely on city planning's analysis that this is not unprecedented at all. It's consistent with, in their view, other buildings in the area. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Panel members, do you have any questions for Mr. Fodrick?
I have, I have two questions, Madam Chairman. The first, we have two reports from Heritage. One indicates that they are concerned with the property. Now, that was, that was in 2019 in August. The subsequent one in June of this year tends to suggest that you satisfied their concerns, but it's not clear. Can you clarify whether or not you satisfied their concerns?
Thank you for that and thank you for that question. And it's one of the things I would have spoken more about if I had more time. There is a view that shows, if I could ask you to pull up the document again, there is a view that shows that addresses this heritage issue. So we did bring this, what we applied some time ago, this isn't before you last year because Heritage objected. And we did not want to go with an objection from Heritage. They would probably veto it, to be quite honest. So it was a non-starter to fight them anyway. So we took great pains to modify the proposal and the main modifications, and if I can just, that's the view right there, this sort depicts. And so what you see at the bottom, you see, actually, I'm sorry, it's the bottom picture I'm referring to, right. So this is, this gentleman on the right is looking from Queen Street at the project and this is what Heritage was trying to accomplish. They want to make sure that the building was massed, it previously was massed closer to the front. They didn't want this bulky addition to the front and top of the heritage building. So we compromised, added what is just a little dormer there at the front and maintained this line of sight that they were after, that this shooting off of this gentleman's head, as you can see here, that was their objective. And so by massing the building as we did, we were able to achieve that. And if you pull up the isometric view, and so, yes, initially a year ago wrote in objection and then more recently, about a month ago, wrote that they no longer had any concern. Yeah, so here, and the top view demonstrates that that little dormer addition was the only modification to the front that we settled on. If one's standing on the street, it'll look, and if you scroll, and actually, final thing, go to the very last page of this document, there's the very last page, there's, this was also kind of the killer thing for Heritage. There you have it. So this is what Heritage wanted to achieve and that's, that's, that's the, so before you would have a building that was visible from the street, no longer is it, so that was what Heritage wanted.
My second question has to, follows up on your next door neighbor's comments. She referenced the rooftop deck and privacy issues that she had about that. I apologize, the drawings that we have on our agenda are almost unintelligible. The isometrics are fine, but the actual floor plans, you can't read half of them. Do you have anything that shows the relationship of that rooftop deck to the adjacent neighbor's property and so that I can better understand her concerns about overlook?
Right. Well, I do have those plans, I'm just struggling. Again, this is where I'd put them up on the projector if we were in person. I'm just trying to show them to you. I'm scrolling through them right now and they were submitted to the committee. When I look at the development application portal, I do see them there as a link and they, they seem clear. This is the version I'm looking at, so I don't know if you're able to access that.
Yeah, this is, this is good. You see, in our, in our agendas, we can't read these plans. There's a technical problem with duplicating them. So where's the deck?
Right. So, let me just, sorry, I'm looking at the PDF version. You'll have to scroll down. Let's, let's scroll down. Part of me is that find the right page. I think you saw a glimpse of it there.
Yeah.
That, there, that's probably, stop there.
So I can appreciate what the overlook is.
Right, and so it's not a deck that, so this is, this is looking from, so this is the other side, right? So I don't think we have the other elevation because this is looking from opposite side of the neighborhood, there. That's the neighboring question, so 540, pardon me, 459, that's the neighboring question, right? And this is the deck question. So the area adjacent, I mean, normally we hear about overlook, we hear about overlook to one's backyard. That's the conventional kind of complaint. This doesn't really produce that condition. This produces overlook to the roof, which, again, I'm not sure that's a concern. I haven't heard anyone say there's a skylight in her roof. Again, it's a heritage structure, I'm not sure you're allowed to put a skylight in the roof anyway. But, so that, the conventional wisdom about, you know, overlook being a concern is something that I don't see here. The other thing, and this drawing is an illustration of that isometric view did, there are a whole bunch of buildings, including a big FAFF building adjacent to both at the back, that has those sorts of windows that overlook both properties. So, you know, we'd hardly be the first one. And so this is, and again, this is, situating the deck at that location was part of the way we were able to adjust the massing such that it didn't impact, it didn't impact the heritage concern, right? So...
Thank you. That answers my question. The drawing says it all. Thank you very much.
Okay, any further questions, panel members?
I just had one question. Mr. Fodrick, you keep making reference to 463 Queen and I think we did see it on the images. If I could just confirm my understanding, that building was approved, I don't know what the stats are for the building, but it is also built out to the rear lot line?
It's a 20, it is approved, it's under construction as we speak. I had, oh, right, so you could, it's approved by the committee, I might add. If you do pull up the document again, it is, the built form is illustrated and there's one shot that really does highlight it well. If I could just beg your indulgence one final time. Scroll, so you can see it, it's shaded there, but there's even, I mean, there is a better one later on, but that sort of does illustrate it. So it's very, just go back to that view, there's a better one, but there's, for the sake of time, yeah. So this, this illustrates that extension and their setback is almost identical to ours. One difference that they have is their lot is slightly deeper than ours, right? So that sort of works against the, you know, when you're doing a setback. But I think the building line, so to speak, is the key thing. And if you look at the isometric view, again, just intuitively, and it's like, it's a bulkier building, 463, just, just, yeah, there you can see 463 there.
Okay. Oh, I see. So the height is, it's a, it's a three-story building? Or is it a three-story building that's proposed?
Well, I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
Two and a half.
Whether they, what it's considered, it's a three-story, I'm not sure if it's considered a four or not. Like, the building up behind us may be considered a four, depending on what that pop-up is. I don't think that's a mechanical penthouse. I think that's a little like recreation area or whatever. So I'm not sure, but it is three or four, one of the two.
Nonetheless, that clarifies it. Thank you. That's the building I thought it was, but I just wanted to be sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions, panel members? Seeing none, let's take it into committee. Okay, any comments? A motion?
Madam Chairman, I would, I'd suggest that the applicant's submission of the configuration of the lot being a big factor in its variance is quite true. I think that the irregular shape of the lot inflates the size of the variances. I think that the irregular shape of the lot inflates the size of the variances. There's a lot of them, there are a lot of changes, but I think many of them are due to a rather unusually shaped lot. Having given, or having said that, I think that the applicant has done an extremely good job in trying to adjust his proposal to the existing context. The setbacks on the upper levels of the, of the building appear to have been designed in consultation with the planning department. I think they're effective in allowing the Heritage Building to dominate the visual field in the area. I think that from the street, the, the project is quite compatible with the existing area, notwithstanding the fact that it's a much bigger building. I don't see there being difficulties. I needed clarification of the overlook from the deck. And I think, as the applicant indicated, the overlook is not into privacy or amenity space. Having said all that, Madam Chairman, I think that the, the variance requests are reasonable and appropriate, and I would like to move approval of the application subject to the planning department condition about constructing substantially in accordance with the drawings, forestry condition number two. And as I read it, there is no heritage condition. Heritage appears to have indicated their support for the application.
Okay, yeah, that's correct. Okay, do I have a seconder?
Madam Chair, I'm going to second this. I think this is a well-thought-out proposal, and I do agree with all of my colleagues' comments. It's also, I think, noteworthy just to point out that, under the official plan, this is a mixed-use area. It is Queen Street. It is very close to the downtown core. Gentle densification makes sense in this location and the zoning as well. It's in a CR zone, which I think it was noted in the planning department memo that if it was constructed as a new building, would be considered an apartment of mixed use. So I'm seconding the motion. I think this does meet the four tests, in my view.
All right, I have a motion to approve, including the planning condition in the August 26 report, forestry condition number two, moved by Mr. Nipfel, seconded by Ms. Valentini. All in favor? The application has been unanimously approved. Thank you to everyone who spoke. Okay, the next item is item number five, 16 Braemar Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, and we have forestry asking for condition number two. Is the agent on the line?
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chairman and committee members. My name is Sarban Aznazem. I'm the architect for this project.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'm happy to, yeah.
Yeah, I'm going to check if we need a presentation and then I'll, I'll come back to you. Okay, panel members, do you need a presentation? No?
No.
Do any of you have any questions of Ms. Nazem?
No.
No.
Okay, we'll take it directly into committee.
Madam Chair, I'm happy to start on this one. I feel this one is, in my view, it needs a four test. I feel it is compatible with what is currently going on in the neighborhood and that the variances, in this case, in my view, meet the four tests. So on that basis, unless my colleagues have any other comments, I'd like to bring a motion forward for approval of the application, subject to urban forestry condition number two.
I agree, and would be happy to support the motion. Second motion?
Okay, motion to approve, including forestry condition number two, moved by Ms. Valentini, seconded by Mr. Nipfel. All in favor? The application has been unanimously approved. Thank you. Item number six, 218A Berkeley Street. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, three photographs of the subject property, a covering letter from Monica Kuhn, the agent, an explanation letter that was circulated to neighbors by the owners, Allison and David Sayad. We have email correspondence from Transportation Services, Permits and Enforcement Parking, correspondence in support from number 235 Milan Street and 225 Berkeley Street, and opposition from number 231 Milan Street. Now, I'm showing people speaking in support. Are they on the line or not?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This person was here to speak, but they have chosen to remove themselves.
Okay, so no speakers?
Correct.
Okay, can I have the agent please identify herself for the record?
Yes, it's Monica Kuhn, I'm here.
Okay, panel members, do you have any questions of Ms. Kuhn? I don't think we need a presentation. Yep, go ahead.
Could I just get a clarification? The original proposal included the driveway staying as parking space. I just want to make sure I've got it correct. You've removed that proposal and you're now proposing to have that driveway as soft landscaping and, and which is what Transportation had requested. Am I correct?
Yes, yes, you're correct.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, let's take it into committee. Any comments?
Madam Chair. I think this is, I'm sorry, go ahead, Lisa.
No, it's okay, go ahead, Carol.
I think this is quite a reasonable proposal and one that I suspect we'll see a fair bit more of. The original proposal gathered, the larger issue was the driveway. And that seems to have been resolved. The driveway will be removed and turned into landscaping. The curb cup will be, will be restored as a curb. And on that basis, Madam Chairman, I think it clearly meets the four tests and is something that is reasonable and appropriate. I would move approval of the application, subject to the Transportation Services condition about soft landscaping and restoration of the curb.
Okay, do I have a seconder?
I'll second it, Madam Chair.
I'm going to take Mr. Chang, if that's okay. He had his hand up. All right. Okay, I have a motion to approve, including the transportation condition in the August 31 email to restore the obsolete driveway, moved by Mr. Nipfel, seconded by Mr. Chang. All in favor? Your application has been unanimously approved. Thank you. Item number seven, 118 Morningside Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, a staff report from Ravine, although I did not see any conditions in that. And I have correspondence in support from number 120 Morningside, which is adjacent, as well as 23 form letters in support. I'm showing we have somebody speaking in opposition from the Swansea Ratepayers Association. Okay, can I have the agent identify himself for the record, please?
Good morning, Darren Sanger-Smith here. Thank you.
Okay, we have one variance before us. So can I have you do a very brief presentation? We have somebody speaking in opposition.
Certainly.
Actually, hang on, before you start, let me just speak, can I have Mr. Singh on the line, just to, just to confirm?
Good morning.
Hi, are you, are you speaking in opposition, Mr. Singh?
That's correct.
Okay, so then we'll go ahead with the presentation. I just wanted to confirm, so I'll come back to you. Okay, Mr. Sanger-Smith, go ahead. I'm starting the clock now.
Thank you. The presentation before you was for a, what was supposed to be a renovation in addition to an existing eighty-plus-year-old home. Since then, and at that time, we had about six or seven variances that we were applying for. During the process, we came across issues with foundation, which forced us into a position of actually removing the house in total, which gave us the opportunity actually to relocate and adjust the position of the proposed design slightly to eliminate all of the variances, with the exception of the one that is before you today. The reason for the variance is, as you understand how height is calculated through established grade as the adjacent to the front yard setback on either side, if you're familiar with the site, you'll see that there is a two or plus meter height difference running east to west on the property. And as such, the calculation of established grade actually pulls the established grade down, about a meter below the finished floor level. In proposing the design, we actually looked at a somewhat off-balance roofline that allowed the neighbors to the west to have a slightly over one-story look, and all the neighbors to the east to have a slightly larger two-story. It was a roofline that was intended to keep the slope in keeping with the proportions of the overall neighborhood. But as such, because of the way that the established grade was calculated, it did push our house up by one meter, which, as you can see in that elevation, is really just the peak of the, the roof itself. The rest of the structure is well below that, and we've tried to be sensitive to our neighbors with bringing the rooflines right down to the, to the, to the west side. I understand that we received a letter from Mr. Singh yesterday morning at 11 o'clock stating his objection to the application primarily for two purposes, as my understanding is that there is a clerical error on the drawings submitted, in which drawing A0 and A1 of our submission had a revision date on it of September 24, 19, and a revision date of number 12. That is a clerical error on our part. The drawings, the site statistics on those two drawings are updated and are accurate, as per the revision dates of revision number 13 I outlined in the rest of the drawings. So that is on stage to clerical error on our part, but was brought to my attention by Mr. Singh. I have no further comments, and I'm open to questions. Thank you.
All right, I think we'll hold our questions until we hear from Mr. Singh. Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Singh, just state your name and the association for the record, and then I'll start the clock.
Thank you. My name's Nicholas Singh, and I'm speaking for the Swansea Ratepayers Association Group.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, I stated, our understanding is that this application has been adjusted. After reviewing the materials provided, we came to the conclusion that there were a number of errors in the materials, and it has failed to also identify necessary variances. So we believe the lack of clarity in the materials renders them deficient, and together with the missing bylaw variations, this application should be refused or deferred until those matters have been verified. As Mr. Sanger-Smith said, we did give them a heads up on that, and we understand they want to proceed. We also object to the height variance on the grounds that it's unnecessary. So to look at a few more specifics as to why this application should be deferred, it more longer suits the purpose of the application. As mentioned, it was to have a second story and a third story addition, side second-floor roof, a third-story green roof. As per the email response from Mr. Sanger, this is now considered to be a new building, a completely different building, under the description previously applied to this. We note that the application hasn't been amended, and we feel that's a problem altogether. Problems with the submitted documents start with the site plan, as mentioned. They not only have different dates on them, they refer to different revisions. Page A0 and A1 refer to this being room 12. The other pages, A2 and A9, yes?
I was just going to tell you that we are only looking at the variance. We, we don't look at whether the dates are correctly represented on the site plan, and they are here on a waiver, so if there are incorrect things, when they go for building permits, they're going to have to come back to committee to correct it. Yeah, or make it comply if, if there's errors on the plans.
Thank you. So Mr. Sanger assured me that the error was immaterial about, if you look at the key that's on the documents used to identify the lines on the site plan, page A0, they seem to be mismanaged and mislabeled, but wrong nevertheless. For example, the second item in the key reads dashed wide heavy lines outline required setbacks. This happens to be true with the rear of the property, where the rear setback measured out at 9.09 meters from the rear lot line. If you look at the line at the back of the property, parallel to the stone retaining wall, you'll see that it has a different setback, but this is not accurate. The key also identifies a shaded area, that's the last key in the item, as a first-floor addition. But the drawing has no shaded area. However, it does seem possible that the extension, which was originally planned for this property, still appears to be outlined on the site plan, but is now incorrectly labeled as rear setback. In addition, it was supposed to be removed completely, comply with the bylaws. It's possible that it's still there when you look at those lines. The key also shows a third floor outline. Elevation drawings don't have a third floor, so it should not be there at all. But if you look for it on the drawing, an interpretation of the several different types of dotted unsolid lines, you can find a third story there. We agree that third story is not on the elevation drawings, but if this application is approved on condition of compliance with the site plan, there will be sufficient confusion to allow previous revision 12 be used for construction. This potentially allows for a third floor or for the outline for the setbacks to become limits of the building. We're not saying that the owners would do this, but once it's approved, it's approved and that no harm done. This in turn creates conflicts with pages A2 and A9, which show a completely different building and a different revision number. So the question arises, which one is correct if this is approved as it is? Page one also identifies rear yard setback of 9.14, however, the site plan on page A0 shows setback of 9.09. It's a small difference, but it reinforces doubts about what is presented in the documentation. In either case, the rear deck is also shown at or near the rear of a property line.
Okay.
We believe this.
I'm sorry, but you're, you're over five minutes now, so I need you to wrap up, please.
Okay, so we have also missing variance for the parking pad, which is shown. The bylaw does not allow the parking pad to be in front of the main wall, so this is improper on the plans. We also have a missing variance for.
Okay, I'm sorry, but you're almost at six minutes, so I have to, I have to cut you off here. Okay, I, we, I think we understand your message is that there are things that are not jiving on the plans, quite a few of them, by the sounds of it, based on your submission.
Correct.
Okay, all right. So thank you very much for pointing all those things out. Mr. Sanger-Smith, can you speak to what was raised here about your plans? I mean, I'll just give you a few minutes to rebut. Actually, before you do that, Mr. Deputy, or Madam Deputy Secretary-Treasurer, did you want to weigh in here?
No, I just want to remind the committee members that when the, when an applicant files with a waiver, they take responsibility for their variances. As the chair pointed out, if this is approved and they apply for a permit and there are other variances, they won't get a permit, or they'll have to revise the plans to comply. If you are concerned about the height variance and want to tie it to an elevation, there is a way of putting in a condition that you tie the height to the front elevation or the side elevation, and that if there are any other variances on those plans that are not written in your decision, they're not authorized, if that's what you're leaning towards, if you were to tie. Just to remind everybody, though, the committee doesn't approve plans, you approve variances.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate Mr. Singh throwing us on this. We have gone through numerous revisions on this project at the very original, two years ago this application was for a three-story building. We had comments and discussions with planning, they were not in support of it, we revised the design. The legend on the survey is just not the legend. The application has been revised numerous times, and what we're in front of you today for is a two-story building that is as per the plans and elevations that are attached to the survey. We did go through a PPR we have for almost two years. When we revised the application to be a new build as opposed to a renovation in addition, we signed the waiver because in our communications with planning department and everything that was going on, we had narrowed it down to just the one variance on height. Yes, there are some clerical errors in regards to dates and revision times, but the legend is, a legend that illustrates that, yes, there was a third floor at one time, that is not on the drawings now by any stretch. And I'm more than happy to have the drawings reflect into, into committee in two minutes that's the case. However, we are applying just for the variance for the height.
Okay, thank you. Panel members, do you have any questions related to the variance?
I have one question, Madam Chair. The question, or the concern that the opposition had about the third floor, I think it's simply stated, I think it has to do with drawing A5, and it's a, it's a roof plan. And the way in which the roof plan is illustrated, it indicates the floor plan of the floor below, as well as the roof plan. it indicates the floor plan of the floor below as well as the roof plan, and I think it is easy to misunderstand that that is a third floor plan. In fact, I believe it is in fact a roof plan, those very fine lines, the ridges of the roof, the flat roof and so forth. The only other question that was raised that I'd like clarification on is, is there a proposed parking pad? And is it, your understanding, you do or do not need another variance for that?
When we made the original application, there was a variance for a front parking pad for width. We are allowed to have a parking space in the front, that is, but we did not need a variance for it. We needed a variance at the time for the size of the parking space, and as a result of moving the building, we then allowed that parking space to be compliant with the required parking space size.
Thank you. That's good.
Okay, any other questions, panel members? Ms. Valentini?
Yes, I just have a question about, in terms of height, since this is what we're dealing with. Property across the street is a two-story building. I think it's 109 Morningside. In terms of, and I mean, there's a major grade change on this street, I recognize that. Any of the properties to the east, that front on, I don't know what the name of the side street is, but they, but this property are much higher up than this property. But the property across the street at 109, do you have any idea how tall that is in terms of height? It is a two-story house.
No, I apologize. I do, I do not.
Okay, okay. That was my only question. Thank you.
Any further questions, panel members? Okay, seeing none, let's take it into committee.
Madam Chairman, I accept the applicant's submission about how the height variance came into being. It appears that what he was trying to do is replicate the dominant pitched roof forms of the buildings already on the street. And given the variation in grade, it didn't result in an equal pitch on both sides. And to extend one pitch up, it ended up with a building that, in fairness to the top of the roof, is higher, but the additional space is not habitable space, and I don't think personally that it reads as a building that's much higher because of the strong sloped roofs. And I think that the approach that was taken to mimic the pitched roofs in the area is very sympathetic to the area and appropriate. I do not have trouble with this application. I think it's a quite reasonable application. The variance is modest, but I do think that it would be appropriate to tie the approval, if there is one, to the elevation drawings, because I think the way in which the building has been configured is unique and is in fact the reason that I think we have a variance before us.
Okay. Any other comments?
I agree with what Mr. Nipfel has said, and I do not have a problem with this application as well. I think that the design is sensitive to the properties, I believe, to the west, which are 121, 122. They drop down in height on that side. And again, as I pointed out earlier, the properties to the east of this property are in a much higher elevation. So in my view, there's other two stories in this neighborhood as well. So I think I agree with Mr. Nipfel in terms of tying it to the elevations, just because I think the slope of the roof does soften the height impact, so I'm in favor of the application myself.
Okay, can I have a motion?
Madam Chairman, I'd move approval of the application subject to development being in keeping with and consistent with the elevation drawings that are before us, and there are no other conditions.
Okay, do I have a second or...? Okay, I have a motion to approve moved by Mr. Nipfel, seconded by Ms. Valentini, and to tie the approval to the elevation drawings submitted. All in favor? Okay, the application's approved. Okay, we have a number of items left, so I'd like to take five minutes, and we'll be back in five minutes. I didn't check the clock. Is it five minutes? Should be. Are you sure? I think it's five. Or do you need more time?
They're not, they're not back yet.
Carl's back. He probably went to check on Diego. Lisa will probably come on when she hears me read. I got a lot to read on this one anyway, so. Yeah, I think it's five minutes. All right. Ready?
We should wait for air.
Yep. Okay. The next item is item number eight, 68 Geary Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, seven renderings of the proposed application, a previous decision affecting the property. We have email correspondence from traffic planning, and as well as the Transportation Standards Officer, permits and enforcement parking, and another communication dated August 31st. Staff reports from community planning, as well as forestry is asking for condition number one, and planning is asking for refusal of the application. We have a letter from the local counselor recommending approval, correspondence in support from 514 Delaware Avenue, as well as a four signature petition in support from owners on Geary at number 70, which is adjacent, as well as 72 and 76 and 514 Delaware. Okay, I don't show any speakers. Can I have the agent please identify himself for the record?
Yes, Madam Chair, my name is Enzo Locaseno. I am the agent for this application.
Okay, panel members, can we go straight to questions, or do you need a presentation? It looks like questions. Does anybody have any questions of the applicant? Mr. Locaseno, you're aware of the planning report?
Yes, that's, we, we've been working with planning, and we did revise the drawings and eliminated five variances, but planning seems to refer back to the, the Geary report, which is still in its infancy stage, which Ms. Bilau is actually spearheading, and she makes it very clear in her letter that committee should really not look at that study yet because it's still early and is changing constantly. My client and the adjoining neighbors are very active with Anna Bilau in this, this study that's being done for Geary, and we've been working with the counselor, and she's very much in support of what we're doing here on this, this property.
Okay. Panel members, are there any questions you have of the applicant?
No.
Madam Chairman, perhaps I could start off on this one. I, I have, I have a lot of difficulty with this application. I don't frankly think that, that the proposal that is before us is in keeping with the area and the context. I think it, from my perspective, it represents a case of overbuilding that is out of context with, with the area. Perhaps the study would introduce other elements that would suggest how future development would be more consistent with this, but taken on its own, I, I'm unable to support the application as it currently stands, and I would personally recommend that the application be refused.
Okay, we are in committee. Are there any other comments? Okay, I don't see any. Did you want to say any?
Sorry. Yeah, Madam Chair, I apologize for coming back late. I'm just going to abstain from voting on this one since I missed the discussion earlier, and my apologies, so.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, I, I guess what I propose to do is to bring forward a, a motion to have the application rejected. As I said earlier, there is extensive height variations requested. I don't see the merit in those variances. I don't think that they're in keeping with the overall character of the area, and, and on that basis, I don't believe that this application would meet the four tests.
Okay, I have a motion to refuse the application, moved by Mr. Nipfel. Do I have a second or...?
Yeah, I agree totally that the development is very huge, and the numbers of the size contribute to the scale that actually is, that's really the point. And I mean, unless, like, like, like the discussion we have, unless there's a course in that it's a future development, I need for this, that which this project is going to meet for the vision, but we don't see that at the moment. This is really an open question.
Okay, I have a motion to refuse the application, moved by Mr. Nipfel, seconded by Mr. Chang. All in favor? Your application has been refused, and Ms. Valentini abstains from voting.
Just to note, since I was absent for the presentation, my apologies. Thank you.
Okay. The next item is item number nine, 45 Pendrith Street. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevation, a previous decision affecting the property, as well as an OMB decision that was made in the past. I'm showing one speaker in opposition. Okay, can I have the agent please identify himself for the record?
Good morning. My name is Raymond Deo.
Okay, panel members, we have one variance before us. Mr. Luke, can you do a very brief presentation, letting us know why you need the depth variance, because we have one speaker in opposition, and I'll have you back after that speaker speaks as well.
Good morning. Back in 2007, we applied for the permit, and subsequently, the building was built. But the final inspection, the, at the final, the building is one foot long more. So it requires to go for the committee adjustment to the depth. So the, so the, as built is 17.17 meters against, against 16.86 meters. So we asked the committee for the redress.
Okay, just to clarify, what's the existing depth?
The existing, 17.17.
No, you're, you're, yeah, okay. Oh, yeah, it's already built. Okay.
And can I clarify, the 16.86 is what is the OMB decision? Is that correct?
Yes, that's, that's right.
Thank you.
Through you, Miss Madam Chair, the OMB approved, they were required 14, or permitted 14 meters, the OMB allowed 16.86, and they've now constructed at 17.17.
Okay. Mr. Luke, why wasn't it built to what the OMB approved?
No, that was built long time ago, since the permit in 2007. So we missed dropping that on the, for OMB.
Andy, are you saying that it was built before the OMB decision?
I'm confused. The OMB decision is from 2016.
Right. And then they had a previous decision in 2015. So they were, through you, Madam Chair, they were refused by the committee, they appealed, they went to the board, the board granted the variances that were outlined in, in the decision that was refused, and when they constructed, they constructed beyond the permit and beyond the approvals on the depth. Everything else complies with the board's decision.
So when was this actually constructed? After 2017?
17.17 is.
Nope. When did you receive your building permit?
When did you...?
I think 2000, I don't remember now. I don't have a record.
I can look it up. It looks like 2000 and...
10 or 11.
Well, I would just note that on both the OMB decisions, the, the owners' names are the same as what we have before us today.
So the question, Madam Chair, your question still remains unanswered. What mitigating circumstances caused, this is to the applicant, what mitigating... What mitigating circumstances caused, this is to the applicant, what mitigating circumstances caused you to build beyond the OMB decision?
No, actually, we have, we made a drafting error.
Okay, hang on one second. Mr. Lu, we're going to call you because you're not coming through clearly, and in the meantime, while we do that, Madam Deputy Secretary-Treasurer wanted to say something, so go ahead.
Right, through you, Madam Chair, sorry. I'm just looking at a bit of a history here. It seems that there was a part of a roof collapse in 2008, and then there was construction, and that the construction actually happened before they came to the committee back in 2015, because that application was to legalize and to maintain, and it was refused. They went to the board, the board allowed them to legalize and maintain. I guess somewhere in the information that was provided to the committee and to the board, the building is actually longer than what they said it was back then, I'm guessing. I just, I don't, it doesn't look like there's been any construction since the OMB decision, so it was not presented accurately in the first place, it appears.
Mr. Lu, did you hear that?
Unless they've done something else to the building since the OMB decision.
Yeah, the way, the way you described sounds like they have.
Right, but it seems like there may have been something else that happened after the board decision, because there's things, notes about construction and noise for, in 2017. So the grade of the property, there's violations, so my guess is that what you're dealing with today is something different, something happened between the board decision and now. I'm just not sure what it is.
Bit of a pattern, perhaps? Okay.
Can we check if there was any tickets issued by the building department?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chang, I didn't understand what you said.
So was there any ticket issued to this project from the building chief inspector or anything like that?
Were there any technical issues from the building inspector?
Any tickets was issued, any site inspector was there?
Yeah, that's building information, I can't really...
We can't access that.
Access that and give that to you. I think maybe the neighbor who's going to speak in opposition might be able to provide a history of what's gone on, perhaps?
So maybe we should hear from the opposition, and then perhaps you can ask questions of the opposition, maybe able to fill in some of the blanks? Okay, so, Mr. Lu will come back to you after I hear from the opposition. Mr. Robellino, are you on the line? Yes, can I have you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Fausto Robellino, 47 Pendrith Street.
Okay, Mr. Robellino, you have five minutes, starting the clock now. Go ahead.
I am objecting to the minor variance through Subsection 45 of the Planning Act. The properties are semi-detached, number 45 and 47. The application is not a minor variance. The construction has negatively impacted on my neighboring property in the immediate and general areas. The primary issues raised for abating owners are the loss of enjoyment of their property due to the following issues: the loss of sunlight, excessive shadows created on my windows, my east side view has been blocked, ugly block wall on the property line, aesthetics adversely impact my property, heightened bulk of the asphalt construction is excessive, the front aesthetics of the speed escape has been changed, which adversely impacted drainage on my walkway to the municipal sidewalk. Neighbor has been discharging water onto my property. There is encroachment constructed on my property and expansion during construction on my property. His drainage is being discharged on my property. He cut down a private tree of 30 millimeters in diameter without the permit to construct the back extension. Second, it does not follow the OMB decision case PL 160231. The length of the building according to the bylaw is 14 meters, and the asphalt construction is 17.17 meters, which is 3.13 meters over the OMB decision. They allow it to keep the front and the western side setbacks. The owner encroaching on my property and the city's property due to this decision and has damaged my property. The site plan does not reflect the current asphalt construction, which violates the conditions of the OMB decision. The drawing does not show all current dimensions and setbacks. Also, the survey plan shows a chain link fence on the lot line. Now, the chain link fence has been removed, both ends and throughout, and there is about a 5 to 10 inches encroachment onto my property. The fence has been damaged. City should request an updated asphalt survey that depicts all constructions, central face, sense, locations, buildings. City must impose a work order for the plating and delivery violations of the conditions of approval. We did not sign an agreement for work to be done on the existing parry wall, common wall. They did damage to the plaster on the existing parry wall on our side. The variance requested does not maintain the general intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw. The intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw is to describe the front, rear and side yard setbacks in building sites heightened use. In this case, the addition have not followed the bylaws and setbacks for the front, back and the side setback, which is on the lot line. And it does not follow the OMB decision that was done on September 19, 2016. My chain link fence was erected in 1995, according to the survey that we did, back then owner. Also, the remaining fence has been removed and encroached beyond the lot line. I have issues with drainage, what is being discharged onto my property from the front yard and now the back of the building. Construction has outside setback, which is 0 meters. The downspat was moved from the east side of the center, from the east side of the house to the center of the abating property. The podding is a safety violation, in the winter time, my walkway freezes. Also, I must contact the malpractice from the owner of House 45 and the constant work being done without authorization. The vinyl siding of my one-story, it's been ripped and now replaced. Chain link fence has been moved from the lot line and now it's onto my property. So September 1, 2020, I went to my property and found Josephi Frey had trespassed and removed the chain link fence and post, also four-inch mold area of concrete on my property blocking towards my unit away from his property. As I was leaving, he confronted me and told me he poured the concrete without no authorization. I have made several attempts to the city to get building permit applications, but I have been denied to my request. My last request was done in January 2020 under the Municipal Freedom of Information Act. In conclusion, my stance, the application is to request that the board deny the legalization of the legal construction and to issue a work order requiring the owner to conform to the requirements of the OMB decision. The variance are not minor. The marginal permitted floor space is 0.35 times of the area of the lot, which is 171.
Mr. Robellino, I need you to wrap up. You're almost at five and a half minutes.
Yeah, I'm just wrapping up.
Okay, great.
And then now, now the floor space index is equal to 0.49 times, which is very high, and the length of the building went from 14 meters to 17.17.
Okay.
Due to the minimal violations, I may add, the resale value of my property has been negatively impacted due to encroachment and drainage impacts.
Okay, I think you already mentioned that. So you're at six minutes, so I'm going to have to cut you off. But the members, we may have some questions. I have a question, can you tell me when the last time was that they were building next door?
Last week.
Last week. And what were they building?
They removed the chain link fence and then they poured concrete on my side.
No, no, but what did they do to their house? What were they building to the, on their house?
To the house, no, nothing.
Okay, all right, let me see if, let me see if the members have any other questions for you, okay? Can't see you guys, so speak up if you have a question.
So, Ms. Erin, let me ask first. And so at that committee, at the last committee of adjustment, did you attend the meeting? Did you voice the opposition? Were you attending the OMB?
At the time, I was out of the country, sir, and I couldn't attend.
So the question was, when this was at the OMB or at committee, did you attend those meetings and speak in opposition?
I never received a non-notification.
You've never received notification, okay.
So you were only aware of this project until this time?
No, because I'd been asking the city to provide me, because this gentleman has been doing construction without permit. And so when I was approaching the city for permits, they wouldn't provide me any.
Okay, so basically, you've just seen all the construction, but you've never been at a committee like this before, correct?
No, because you see, yes, that's correct.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Chang?
My second question is, have you talked to any building inspector? Have you talked to anyone from the city who was on-site with you or with your neighbor? Have you had any communication with any city staff?
Yes, I have dealt with many, many inspectors and bylaw officers on these issues. There should be a record, there should be a record in the city.
And from your understanding, have they ever posed any building permit on the outside of the property, showing that they have a permit for all of the construction they've been doing?
I cannot hear you.
Okay, I was asking, was there any building permit posted on the outside of your neighbor's property? Have you ever seen any of those building permit?
After it was constructed.
So the permit was posted after it was constructed?
Correct.
Understood, okay.
Okay, Mr. Niffl, Ms. Valentini, any questions of the speaker?
No.
No? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Robellino. Mr. Lu, can you please speak to the issues about ongoing construction without permits, and again, why you need this depth variance?
Through you, Madam Chair. Raymond, we have you unmuted on your phone. Can you try speaking through there, please? We don't hear anything, so I'm going to unmute your computer device again.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, what I want to say is the 17.17 meters, the length of the building was built, ever since the building was built. We made a drafting error in all this application. Until the inspector find out, we are off by a foot.
Okay, so you're saying that throughout the entire process, the OMB hearings, everything that's been before, any kind of panel was incorrect, and it should have read 17.17 the entire time?
That's right.
Panel members, do you have any further questions of Mr. Lu? Mr. Chang?
Yeah, so what was the number that you put on in the building permit?
Sorry, I don't have the number with my file.
So, following on from that, the drawings that you have before us today show 17.17. I'm assuming, as is Mr. Chang, I believe that those drawings accompanied your building permit, did they not? You need to submit drawings for the, it would appear that you have drawings that show 17.17, so I don't understand how the mistake was made. I could understand a clerical mistake at a committee, but I don't understand a mistake of this magnitude that exists on drawings and on permits, and I think my colleagues are having the same problem. It just, it doesn't sound feasible.
No, the permit, the permit I have is 16.6 meters.
Yes, what's the date of your permit, sir?
Sorry, I don't have the date, okay?
Oh, I thought you had it in front of you there.
No, I have a new one.
There's no date on it?
He has a new permit?
You have a new permit? Did you say you have a new permit?
No, I didn't have the new permit.
Okay, go ahead, Madam Deputy Secretary.
Just for the committee members, I don't know if it's going to sway you one way or the other. The only permit information I see dates back to 2013.
Okay, Mr. Lu, we can hear you if you can just stop talking while, or mute yourself while somebody else is speaking.
So, so the only permit information, there was a small residential project permit for a rear detached garage for a two-unit dwelling back in 2013. There's a lot of activity, not building permit related. There's a minor variance application filed in 2015, then the OMB approval in 2016. No building permit activity since then, and then this current application that was filed in July of last year.
Okay.
And that was withdrawn, sorry, and then another, this application that was filed in November of last year. But there's no building permit application activity since 2013.
Okay, are there any further questions? We've spent quite a bit of time on this, Ms. Valentini.
Sorry to confuse the matters a bit more, but I noticed just based on the view of the property that the second and third floor stepback, it looks like they enclosed an existing front porch. But when I look at the elevation drawings provided, and it might be because the drawings provided by Mr. Lu are different dates, I don't know, but the front elevation is dated 2020 and it shows the stepback, but the side elevations are from 2015 and it doesn't show a stepback. And I just want to clarify, Mr. Lu, you didn't do any other construction by enclosing the front porch since 2015, is that correct? Or your client didn't?
No.
So that didn't, okay, okay. Because your drawings are wrong, so I just want to clarify, no further construction has happened?
No.
Pardon me?
No, we didn't have any more construction. No more construction.
I sat on the original decision on this matter, and I did have concerns with the original application. I don't have the benefit of what the file was, I don't have previous file except for the decision, but I did have concerns when the original application, because I know that it was not approved, and I sat on that panel. And I just want to be clear that you did not, your client did not further enclose the front porch or anything like that since the matter went to be, since it went to be approved.
We didn't do anything. That was.
Because your drawings do show the 17.17 meter depth on the ground floor, and it's from January 2015. Okay, thank you. I can't unmute myself, there we go.
Okay, any other questions, panel members?
I just have a comment that with the information we have, which is pretty contradicting, oh, I have to rely on is the drawings in front of us, and the, basically only the survey is accurate. So we have to kind of determine that depth, if it makes sense in its kind of context.
Okay.
I really can't read the information from, about when it was constructed.
Okay, we've spent a lot of time on this. I don't see any further questions, so let's take it into committee for a discussion and a decision. Well, I'll just start by saying that I'm somewhat conflicted on this because I see a pattern here of building taking place without getting the appropriate permits. And in addition to, as noted by the, you know, other panel members, there are things that, with the drawings, that also seem to conflict. And we're also dealing with a semi here. So, I, you know, I do sympathize with the comments made by the adjacent property owner with respect to being boxed in. Not to mention all the issues with violations and construction issues, which I recognize are not before the committee. But I do think they're part and parcel of this story that's before us, which seems to have been going on for quite some time.
Madam Chairman, this is a difficult application. I agree with you. There appears to be a pattern here disregarding the appropriate approvals. And my concern with approving this application is that we would be reinforcing that pattern. It is a semi. There are legitimate, I think legitimate, concerns from the attached neighbor that this has harmed his enjoyment of his property. Further harm that would come from the additional increase, I think, is... It's still there. And I'm rather loath to establish precedents where if you just ignore the decisions of committees and other bodies, then you can just get approved because constructions occurred. I'm not convinced by the arguments I've heard. The submission is really inadequate. It's in, the drawings don't agree with one another, the history is difficult. I am inclined to bring forward a motion to not approve this application.
Okay, Ms. Valentini?
I'm gonna second Mr. Niffel's motion. I did note that I sat on the original panel that refused the application, and I am not supportive, notwithstanding the OMB decision of the built form of the property. I recognize that's not what our role is right now, today, to look at, you know, the complete built form, it's to look at the depth. But I think the depth is unreasonable. So, I'm still not in favor of the application. I'm seconding the motion for refusal.
Okay, I have a motion to refuse, moved by Mr. Niffel, seconded by Ms. Valentini. All in favor? Okay, the application has been unanimously refused. Thank you to all the speakers. The next item is item number 1023 Doncaster Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey site, plan, floor plans, and elevations. We have a rendering of the proposed application. We have staff reports from planning who are asking for a condition, and forestry is asking for condition number three. We have support letters, eight form letters in support from residents on Doncaster and Gatwick. Correspondence expressing concern from 18 Doncaster. And correspondence in opposition from number 20 Doncaster, and 21 and 25, and 152 West Lake Avenue. Now, I'm showing three addresses speaking. Do you have four speakers on the line, or three?
Through you, Madam Chair, we have four speakers, but if you want to touch base with Reed and Jolie to see if they're of the same unit.
Okay. All right. If I could have the applicant, please identify himself for the record.
Good morning, this is Joel Gerber of 23 Doncaster.
Okay, we do have speakers in opposition, so I'm going to start the clock now. You have five minutes to explain why you need the variances.
Okay, thank you. I will start with a brief introduction and then highlight some of the variances. So, thank you all for your time and consideration this morning. My partner and I and our four children have lived in the two-bedroom bungalow for almost eight years. We are heavily involved with local sports and community programs. And as our children grow, we continue to have a space shrinking on us. It's our desire to stay within the city with our children. This past fall, I canvassed the neighborhood proposing the renderings and the floor plans, trying to glean feedback as part of the iterative design process. The results at the time were quite overwhelmingly positive. This past year, I've been working very closely with community planning, trying to balance the city objectives in tandem with my family's needs. Having the planning recommendation in favor of the project gave our family quite a bit of confidence, considering some other local precedents in the neighborhood of three-story builds. And with these urban projects being complex Rubik's cubes, one variance can have a chain reaction into other issues. So, those are what I would like to very briefly touch base on. With regards to daylight and sunlight or solar access to our neighbors adjacent to the west, we tried to be very considerate and thoughtful in sculpting the third story, both on the front of the house and the back of the house, to promote southeastern daylight to access their solar arrays. We conducted a solar analysis, looking at the main solstices, to confirm that the morning sun is only minimally impacting their access to the solar array. What our model didn't show was very large, you know, as high as four or five-story trees to the southeast, which likely would have more of a burdening impact on their access to daylight than the house would. With regards to the parking, my understanding of the zoning is that we actually have only one parking space on the property. Our garage is the parking space, and our driveway is merely access to the parking space. Unfortunately, I can't even fit my small hatchback in the garage due to the age of the house, so we were forced to park on the driveway. We spent some time trying to coordinate with planning and transportation staff. But in order to properly fit a front yard parking space completely on our property, it would have caused a rift in the line of buildings, both in the front yard main wall and the rear yard main wall. So, my wife and I decided that we would convert the front yard completely to landscaped area, and that we would be, you know, we would sacrifice one parking space as such. With regards to the setback, and also thinking of the solar impacts, while the house remains similar width, we actually shifted the whole house further to the east to promote more access between our neighbors to the west and our house. Not only did this impact the access to daylighting, it also made the houses feel less tight together. Both our neighbor to the east and ourselves had two means of access to the backyard. On the east-hand side, the walkway is quite constrained and rarely used. My understanding is that the neighbor to the east often uses the east side of their house to access their backyard. So, in trying to juggle our setbacks, that was the situation there. And with regards to that neighbor's concern about noise, right now, our bedroom faces their washroom with a single pane, 100-year-old piece of glass. And the positive news is that the proposed design removes all windows along the ground floor adjacent to their home. And with all the current codes regarding installation and R-value, the acoustic separation between the properties to the east will be almost completely mitigated. The sound path of travel is reduced significantly, almost entirely. And with regards to the building height, I just wanted to frame the context that we are about a five-to-10-minute walk to two subway stations. Gatwick is due south of our house. And then all the streets south of Gatwick have a 10.5-meter building height in place. So, we felt that merely being one street away, our proposed 10.3 meters seemed to be reasonable, considering also some local committee-approved precedence of three stories even further north from the subway at Oak Park, as an example.
Mr. Gerber, you're approaching five and a half minutes, I need you to wrap up.
That's all for now, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Panel members, are you okay to hold your questions till after we hear from the opposition? Okay. Mr. Smith, are you on the line?
Hello, can you hear me?
I can. Can you please identify yourself, name and address for the record?
Madam Chair, members of the committee, my name is Darren Smith. My address is 32 Gatwick.
Okay, you have five minutes, starting now.
Thank you very much. I am opposed to the proposal because I consider it to be too large, as evidenced in the six requests for variance, again, covering lot coverage, building height, space to the east and west of the proposal, and as well as the reduction of the parking spaces being requested. I also acknowledge the forestry concerns as well. So, for me, the house is too tall. It affects the views from our property that we abut. As well, it is a three-story proposal, which does not fit in the, I'll say, surrounding immediate community. This is predominantly bungalows, as well as two stories. I, myself, have a two-story, which I built two months ago, that fits into the character of the neighborhood. I would say that, again, the size being requested for maximum area usage at 7% over the bylaw, going to 42%, as well as the proximity to property lines. And it is the other point that I want to make. Interesting conclusion, I view this as completely too large in all size, area, and of the proposal, maximum floor space as well. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Mr. Smith. Do you have any questions, panel members of the speaker?
No.
Okay, thank you. Do I have Jolie Christman and Reed Lachlan on the line? Is it Jolie?
Yes.
Okay, you're both...
This is Jolie, and Reed is here, okay.
Okay, you're both from the same address, correct?
Yes, and Reed is here, I will defer to Jolie.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you very well, but I need to know who's speaking, or if both of you are speak... Okay, so Jolie, you're gonna speak for the duration?
Yes, please.
Okay, so can I have you please identify yourself, name and address for the record?
Sure, my name is Jolie Christman. I live on 21 Doncaster Avenue, immediately to the west of the property.
Okay, starting the clock now, you have five minutes, go ahead.
Thank you. So, first of all, we really enjoy having the Gerbers as neighbors. We have been in our home since 2009. And we've enjoyed getting to know them. We're in support of them extending interior living space, despite the fact that there's gonna be an unavoidable, obviously, construction disruption for however long goes on. As I've had a chance to look in detail at the plans, and even as those plans have been changed and adjusted over the past few months, the reality of the sheer size of the variances has sunk in. And I'm continuing to worry about the long-term effects. They're weighing on me as it gets closer in date. The long-term effects to my own family's lives, in our yard and our home due to the reduced sunlight and airflow, and also from the reduced morning sunlight on our solar panels. Our house is a 1.5-story, but the peak of our roof at its center is significantly below the current height of their existing house, 6.5 meters, let alone the bylaw, which allows 8.5 meters, or what they're asking, which I understood what is 10.77 meters. And so, it is a continued concern. The municipal plan, the land use designations are designed to reinforce existing physical character. And the plans are stated, they're supposed to be sensitive, gradual, and fit the existing physical character. And the block by far is one, one-and-a-half-story houses. We chose to buy a house and live in the interior of a residential neighborhood, farther from the subway and transit. But we chose that deliberately for the small, modest houses, the quiet streets, the trees, and the sunlight, the general feel of the neighborhood. So, I'm just worried that the magnitude of the variances would have a significant negative impact on both our property, which is immediately next door, and the surrounding street and neighborhood as a whole. In terms of the other properties around, some of them are on West Lake, which is a much busier street, and they're on a hill and unusually high for the neighborhood. But, yeah, I'm just, I'm concerned. The solar panels on the solar study show that they would be shaded by this new construction until 10:00 a.m. most of the year. And I have sent pictures along with my letter that by 8:30 a.m., even at this time of year, which is not when the sun is highest, that the sun has cleared their roof, and we're getting sun on almost all of our soul with them all. So, that's a concern. Anyway, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and...
I just have a very quick question. Mr. Gerber indicated that the design was done in such a way to be sensitive to your solar panels. Did you go over that with him?
We did. And he has designed a sloped roof on the third-floor level. But as you can see in this top picture on the screen now that you're showing, that's his... The sloped roof that you see has a top height of 6.5 meters, and the sun is over. I'm more worried that the second floor of his proposed house will block the solar panels. But I know that, obviously, he's allowed up to what the current bylaw allows. I'm just worried of the additional height. We also have some side windows of our house, and the extra height beyond the current bylaw would block that much more light in the sky from our side windows of our house, which is our only interior light in the middle of our house.
Okay, thank you. Panel members, do you have any further questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Embry, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
I can. If you can also identify yourself, name and address for the record, and I'll start the clock right after that.
My name is William Embry, at 20 Doncaster Avenue. I'm also speaking for Kelly Richardson, also at 20 Doncaster Avenue.
Okay, go ahead.
Good morning, thank you to the committee. First, I'd like to talk about the form letters of support. I'm concerned about the clarity of the November 2019 plans on which these letters are based. Two weeks ago, I canvassed the neighborhood with the April 2020 plans, and the people I spoke to were shocked at the size and scope of this development. They hadn't realized there was no parking, or that the lot coverage was so big. And they didn't know how the height was so extreme in three stories, or the FSI was huge at 41.39% more than allowed. One person described these elusive November plans as smaller and more reasonable. I, myself, never saw any of this. And at a height of 11.9 meters and FSI of 294.4, they must have been much larger. The optics, for me, aren't good. My second concern is that the variances aren't minor. Variance 5, zero parking, the homeowners are a growing family with two vehicles. Growing families need more parking to accommodate visits from friends and family. The plans refer to a future basement secondary suite. Again, a need for more parking. The plans refer to an office with a six-seat conference room. Visits from clients, suppliers, and couriers require more parking. The front basement walkout is out of character for this area. The sacrificed parking for such a feature is unfair to those of us paying for legal parking. Variances 1, 2, 1, and 4, the combination of these would result in a house that would dominate the landscape. It would, the outlook would loom over the other homes, including mine. From my perspective, two doors away, the array of roofs does not mitigate the impact of the requested height. In fact, it is the opposite. The various roofs and outcroppings create an even greater heightened mass. The third-floor green roofs are troubling. A house on our block installed a green roof. Once the builders sold the home, the green roof was converted to recreational deck space. The adjoining neighbor now has no privacy. So, in conclusion, as a 30-year resident of Doncaster Avenue, I've seen my neighborhood change incrementally. Homes have been... Homes have been renovated and expanded while respecting the prevailing heights, massing and scale of the area. What's being proposed at 23 Doncaster doesn't follow the sensitive and gradual development pattern. It doesn't fit the existing physical character of our street. On a granular level, it will impact my privacy, light, and access to parking. More importantly, it negatively impacts my plans to retire here and enjoy a neighborhood I thought was protected by local bylaws and codes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any questions of the speaker?
No.
Seeing none, Mr. Gerber, are you there?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Okay, I'd like you to speak to the issues raised, and I would also, I have a question, which is, do you have examples of FSI at 1.06 times in the proximity of your house?
Yeah, so I can respond to the magnitude of the variances, and then I can respond piece by piece. So upon the early design phase, we conducted a survey of local committee-approved properties. And while the original plans from this past year, when I canvassed, the building was actually much larger. And working with the community planner, we tamed all the variances down significantly. Rather than trying to take the best of every committee approval and try to work with that, it was too unreasonable of an overbuild, and our family appreciated that. So thus the process of working with the community planners. So there are a few properties in the neighborhood with as high as 1.3 FSI. There are properties with higher building heights. There are properties with larger lot coverages. But as taken as a whole composition, we are below the worst case of many of those properties. Speaking to the secondary suite, the drawing package clearly shows a single-family home with no basement apartment. We felt that we needed that space for our family and didn't have a desire to rent out the basement. With regards to the green roofs, part of the sculpting or the massing of the project was to minimize that third story looming over the street. The green roofs at the front and the back were actually meant to push our windows back from the street, so that there wasn't as much privacy concerns about the actual views to adjacent lands. You know, we have no plans in place to convert the green roofs to a patio. The Ontario Building Code would require door access, as well as guardrails. We do not have guardrails, and we only have windows facing the green roofs, to minimize the impact of privacy. With regards to the walkout basement, we had desired to try to keep our garage, but because of the significant grade change in the finished floor of the basement, the slope of the driveway would have been completely unrealistic. So to access children's bicycles and other equipment, we kept the walkout basement for sheer efficiency, to bring things in and out of storage, whether it's camping, or kayaks, or bicycles. With regards to the side window of our neighbor to the west, part of shifting our whole house to the east was to try as best as we could reasonably provide breathing space between our neighbors and allow them to have their windows unencumbered as much as we could. I think that kind of addresses my points.
Okay, thank you. Panel members, do you have any questions of Mr. Gerber?
No.
Yes, I do. Can you open your drawing on SS 101, solar study? So you have, can you roughly tell us where are the solar panels at your neighbor's house?
Yes, I'll try my best to describe it. So the building on the left represents our neighbors to the west, correct? And you can see the dormer into the 1.5-story at the front facing Doncaster. The solar panels provided in the pictures of the neighbors are on that second bay directly south of where the hand is right now. If you move your cursor to that one panel up, right there, that's actually the section of angled roof that the solar panels are present.
Otherwise, you are blocking the solar panel only for about two hours a day?
That's my understanding. And that was the extreme, I believe that was the winter, oh no, that's the, okay, summer solstice, yeah. So yeah, and you can see that, you know, also past just around 11 o'clock, the daylight and sunlight access to the east side of their house, where their two windows are, is fairly mildly impacted. That's basically directly adjacent to solar panels in the dormer. The one important thing to note, as I stated earlier about the solar analysis, is that these are merely solar shading of the massings themselves. It does not include any vegetation on adjacent properties, both conifers and deciduous and species.
Okay. Well, thank you.
My pleasure.
Mr. Niffel, did you have a question?
No, I don't.
Okay. Ms. Valentini? No questions? All right, we'll take it into committee for a decision then.
Madam Chair, I just might weigh in on this. I appreciate, in this case, the applicant's attempt at mitigating any of the, in the built form, mitigating sort of some of the impact with the proposed variances. But in my view, I have issue with both the, well, the height is my big concern in this case. The proposed height is at 10.3 meters, and, you know, the bylaw allows for 8.5. Now, I understand that there's a pitched roof, but I still think there is concern in this case. This is a street, from what I've seen, of bungalows and one-and-a-half stories predominantly, and I think even going at the 8.5 would be over the height of many of these houses. So I have real concerns about the height request in this case, and the FSI that goes along with that. I think this is going to be, notwithstanding the great efforts that have been made to try to mitigate, I think this is going to be a large imposing house for the current streetscape. So I'm not in support of the application myself.
Okay, thank you.
I agree with my colleague. I think that this is a case of trying to get too large a house on too small a lot. I also recognize that there have been some efforts to try and mitigate problems with the increased density, but I don't think there's a way of cramming this height and this FSI on this property in a way that doesn't create difficulty for the adjacent homeowners. And as Ms. Valentini said, the street itself is remarkably uniform in being very low-scale, a lot of bungalows. And my concern with approval of this application would be that it would set a precedent for an upheaval of a very stable neighborhood, and I have some difficulty with that.
Yeah, I agree with the height and the coverage. Other than that, the rest of the variance seems to be reasonable. It's just that height and the coverage. If you can improve that in the next stage somewhere else, that would be good.
Okay, who would like to move the motion then?
I'll bring the motion forward, Madam Chair, for refusal of the application, based on the reasons I stated earlier.
I'd second the motion.
All right, motion to refuse the application, moved by Ms. Valentini, seconded by Mr. Niffel, all in favor. Okay, your application has been refused unanimously. Thank you to all the speakers. The next item is item number 11, 67 Willow Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey site, plan, floor plans, and elevations. We have a covering letter from Mr. Gregory, the agent, previous decision affecting the properties at 70 to 86 Silver Birch Avenue, as well as 71 Willow Avenue. We have staff reports from community planning. They're asking for a condition. Forestry is asking for conditions 1 and 2. Correspondence in opposition from number 37, 57, 58, 60, 61, 62, 66, 72, and 80 Willow Avenue. And I have one speaker listed. Okay, can I have the agent please identify himself for the record? You there, Mr. Gregory?
You, Madam Chair. There are two Gregories in the call. There's Shane Gregory and Russ Gregory. Shane Gregory is not registered to speak on the application, but I have a feeling that Russ Gregory left the call earlier to allow Shane to speak on his behalf. Russ Gregory, you are now on the call. We can hear you.
We can?
Russ, can you hear us? Without any other registered agent on file, not sure how you'd like to proceed.
Sorry, so who do I have now? I'm confused.
The only registered speaker for the file was Russ Gregory-
Right.
-who was in the hearing earlier and chose to leave.
Okay.
I gave him a call. He is now in the hearing, but is not responding to us. There's no other registered speaker for the application.
But I have an opposition speaker.
Yes, but no agent.
So can we hold it, and you try to figure out if you can get him on the line? We'll go to item number 12. Okay, item number 12, 7 Labatt Avenue and 77 River Street. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey site, plan, floor plans, and elevations, a covering letter from Courtney Heron-Munk, the agent. We have a transportation consultant report from BA Group. We have a presentation package from the agent. We have a bylaw, 1254/2017, and 1255/2017, along with a revised map, and 1256/2017 with revised diagrams. We have a staff report from Ravine, and I don't have any conditions. We have correspondence expressing concern from number 36 Refex Lane and 61 River Street. All right, do I have two speakers?
Yes.
Yes? Okay, can the agent, can you please identify yourself for the record?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, wonderful. Good afternoon, Chair members of the committee. My name is Courtney Heron-Munk Bowesfield, who is the planning consultant for Labatt Village Holdings, Inc.
Okay. Okay, Courtney, can I, I'm gonna start the clock now, if you can do a brief presentation. We have two speakers in opposition.
Sure, no problem. So the site is located at the southeast corner of River Street and Labatt Avenue. Immediately adjacent to the south is an existing townhouse development comprised of eight townhouse blocks that are three and four stories in height. Just by way of background, the site is subject to site-specific amendments to the official plan and to zoning bylaws 43886 and 5692013, which were approved by City Council in 2017 to facilitate redevelopment of the site with a 38-story residential tower, an 11-story mid-rise base, and retail commercial uses upgrade. This application is intended to secure minor appearances to that council-approved plan and the bylaws to permit minor revisions to the design and recognize design improvements to the building, which have emerged through site plan approval process. The site plan approval application was initially submitted in October of 2019, and in this regard, city planning and transportation staff have reviewed the proposed variances in detail and have not expressed any concerns. In advance of this meeting, as you mentioned, we've provided a covering letter which outlines our justification for the proposed variances, along with this package of visuals that are on the screen. In summary, the requested variances seek to permit the following. So there's minor massing changes to the proposed tower envelope, which is the slide up before you. Minor modifications to the two-story podium base along the south property line. The requested variances to the podium would allow for the existing condition to continue as it relates to the center portion, and would implement improvements to the approved envelope at the southeast corner of the site. The application seeks an isolated increase in height on the west side of the rooftop terrace to accommodate an outdoor pool, and seeks reductions to the resident parking supply and the loading supply. The requested parking variances, as I said, are specific to the resident parking supply, and they reflect changes that have been made through the proposed unit mix, and additional parking analysis that has been undertaken and completed as part of that site plan approval process that I mentioned. We've reviewed the standard conditions from urban forestry, and we have no objections. And we've also reviewed the correspondence submitted by the residents of Corktown Mews. We note the majority of their concerns are construction-related, and acknowledge that matters, sorry, that they have some concerns with the parking supply, particularly as it relates to the public visitor parking. We know that they acknowledge that their construction-related concerns will be addressed through the process, including the preparation of a construction management plan. I understand that my client and members of the condo board have held discussions this morning, and are in the process of securing a meeting with the board and their representative to discuss the construction-related concerns. Given that the variances individually and cumulatively will meet the foretest of the Planning Act, it's my opinion that the minor variance application should be approved. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I think we'll hold questions till after we hear from the opposition, and we'll have you back then. Okay, Ms. Gallagher, are you on the line?
I am, thank you.
All right, can I have you state your name and address for the record, please?
Leslie Gallagher, 61 River Street.
Okay, starting the clock now, you have five minutes.
Thank you. I'm speaking to you as the owner of the property directly adjacent to the southwest corner of this development. I am the last townhouse unit at Corktown Mews on River Street. My objection specifically relates to the parking items in the variance application, items 5 and 6, both in the zoning and specific site variances, which the agent has characterized as minor. I am also a board member of TCECC 2315, and we have submitted our comments to the developer and to the Committee of Adjustment for consideration on other matters, and the agent has acknowledged those, so thank you for that. Specifically to my property, parking in the immediate area of River and the surrounding streets is already very stretched. I have owned this house and been living here for four years, and have noticed significant increases in parking over the last two years specifically, with other large developments going ahead in the area, as well as with the influx of construction traffic and parking. I was previously able to park with my city permit right in front or within a few cars of my door on River Street. Now I'm often required as a resident to park a significant distance, which can, of course, be a safety issue as a woman walking back to my house late in the evening if I have to park on one of the darker side streets. With the proposed commercial space for the ground floor in this development, I will be uniquely impacted if there is not sufficient parking, and I would anticipate we'll see an increase in unsafe parking and stopping on the street if there isn't sufficient parking available in the footprint of the building. Our little pocket of townhouses are homes with families, working parents, couples, all have parking requirements to enable them to enjoy their properties. We've seen significant pressure and would not like to see additional deterioration. Thank you for the opportunity to express my objection.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Gallagher. Ms. Lay, are you on the phone? Yeah?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, now I can hear you. Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, Jennifer Lay, 60 Refex Lane.
Okay, your five minutes starts now.
Okay, I will try to speak to additional points to what Leslie spoke to, although I do echo the same points.
Okay.
I, I know that this is specifically about the variances, but I just want to mention a small point of history, which has, I guess the time has passed, but I think it was important, that in 2016, city council and city councils, in the minutes of the meeting, they required the owner to enter into an agreement that would involve the Corktown Residents and Business Association and the ward counselor to, to work together to address issues during the site plan process. Nobody has heard from the developer since then and this, these variances are the first time we have heard from them again formally. Though I realize the time has passed to address any of the other issues that we have about the size of this site, the heights and all that. But I'm just wanted to express disappointment that we were not part of any type of working group that was required by city council. I'd also like to echo the sentiments about parking. I understand the developer is saying that they are only looking to reduce the residential parking. I don't feel that residential can be separated from, you know, parking issues that would occur due to commercial users. I feel that residential parking in the area is already overstretched. I did have a call from somebody down in River City who lives there as a resident, who stated that adequate parking had not been built down in River City and River Street as a whole does not have public parking and enough residential parking as was planned for in the Regent Park area where they have several public parking lots. So this is, of course, the largest development going in on River Street. There's just been another one at River and Shooter, right across the street, where public parking was not planned for and additional residential parking, I don't know. But this is a chance here with this development to start to address a parking issue that has been going on for many years, where people who live here have to walk 30 to 40 minutes from their home to get to their cars. So I would object to the reduction of any residential parking, which will just push issues onto River Street, which currently has absolutely no parking. And that's what I want to share.
Okay, thank you very much. Panel members, do you have any questions of either one of the speakers? Seeing none. Okay, Ms. Heron-Munk, are you there?
Hi, yes, yeah, I'm here.
Can you please briefly respond to the issues that were raised?
Sure. I first want to thank the residents for taking time to be here today and providing their comments. Respect to parking, in, as it relates to the non-resident spaces, I do think it's worth mentioning that the bylaw requires a minimum of 67 spaces for visitors to the residential units, for the retail, for the office, institutional, et cetera. And what's being provided is 71 spaces. So there's actually an oversupply as it relates to the non-resident spaces. And as it relates to the resident space requested reduction, as I said, it's been tested carefully through the site plan approval process. And at the time of the original approval, it's worth mentioning that the, the product at the time was completely condominium. And now the mix includes a 40, 45% of the current mix is now rental. And other considerations, which are outlined in the traffic report, which supports the variances, outline key considerations for the reduction. And these include the site's locational context being within the downtown with plenty of access to frequent transit and access to bike infrastructure, recent parking supply reduction approval trends in the area, residential parking space sales data and parking utilization rates for condominium buildings in the area, as well as an overall decline in resident parking demand for the city in recent years. Also, the proposed parking supply ratios are actually higher than many of the other approved developments. And there's a list at table four of the traffic report that provides a list of approved rates that are lower.
Okay. And also with respect to the, with respect to what was mentioned about the council decision in 2016 that you were to meet with the Corktown Residents Association and the counselor? Can you explain why that hasn't happened?
Sure, I wasn't involved in the original application, but in terms of engagement efforts that I know have taken place, I know that the owner reached out in February for an introductory, introductory meeting prior to the pandemic and that I've been told that the discussions were put on hold due to the health crisis and that they reached out again on August the 10th, but they didn't receive a response because the condominium corp was in the process of securing representation. Their solicitor did reach out to the owner on August 24th. Well, unfortunately, my client was away on vacation and wasn't there to receive the message. But as I said, the owner has reached out to the condo corp and they connected this morning and are committed to maintaining an open dialogue with the residents.
Okay, thank you. Panel members, any questions of the agent?
I have a question. Could we refer to the ground floor plan for a second? As I understood it, the concern with parking was twofold, that a reduction in residential parking might end up with people parking on the street, particularly on River Street, and making it difficult for people that were using that parking to find parking accommodation close to their homes. If you look at, there it is, the ground floor plan, how is the commercial use? How is the parking for the commercial use to function? You go underground and then you come from an underground parking lot to this, to service this commercial, is that correct? Is there any parking along River Street or along the, the street that's at the, at the top of the drawing?
It's my understanding that all of the park will be located underground.
So I, I think the one objector has a, has a valid point, that grade retail is going to generate parking right on the street and there is no way of accommodating that other than to go to the back of the building, as it were, if you run river down a ramp to an underground parking lot. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's, it's going to be provided through a publicly accessible underground garage.
And can you tell me, is there street parking on River and on that street to the, the other street that's shown on your, on your ground floor plan? Is there, can you park on there, public parking, street parking?
It's my understanding that there is no street parking.
Currently?
Yeah, as it would block the River Street bike lane.
Okay, maybe, okay, that was not my understanding. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll take it into committee for a decision.
Madam Chair, if I could weigh in with some comments on this one. I'm in support of this application. I, I do understand the concerns about the parking, but we have a parking study that supports the reduction. We've seen other reductions for variances, for greater reductions than what's been requested here. So this does fit within what's currently going on in terms of variances. Also, I think the residential sales data and utilization studies conducted that are in the parking study do support a reduced parking supply. I have no concerns with underground parking for commercial, to support the commercial businesses on the ground floor. I mean, that's a common thing we see in the downtown core areas and other areas where there is commercial upgrade and, and there's parking supplied in a below grade, below grade parking structure. I, I feel that the variance with respect to parking is justified in this case, based on the evidence we've been given. And I have absolutely no concerns with the minor changes that are being proposed for the massing of the building. And I think the presentation package was very helpful, in my view, for visually confirming that. I am in support of the variances in this situation.
Madam Chairman, I'm also in support of the variances. My questions with parking were in an attempt to understand implications of existing street parking. And I'm still not clear whether or not this project would, would make existing street parking bad, worse. However, I do think that, as I understood the presentation, these variances came out of a site plan control negotiation process where they've all flowed from improvements to the project. I believe that all of the suggested revisions have been substantially supported with expert opinion. I also don't have concerns with reduction in parking. I just wanted to understand a bit better how it might relate to surface and on-grade parking. But I'm perfectly happy to support this application.
Okay.
So the parking reported, it does no patches for the opponent to understand that part of the units were converted for purpose. And because of that, the, the parking staff could reject lower number than what was required before. And so with that reason and the projection, I, I think the parking issue should be okay.
Okay, do you want to move a motion? Mr. Chang?
Yes, I can move the motion to support, approve this application.
Okay, and that includes the, oh, no, no, sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one. That's right, there's no conditions.
I think there is any condition.
Yeah, no, I was looking at the one that I held. Okay, so I have a motion to approve moved by Mr. Chang. Do I have a seconder?
I'll second it.
Okay, seconded by Ms. Valentini, all in favor. Your application has been unanimously approved. Okay, thanks to the speakers. Can I go back to number 11? Okay, Mr. Gregory, are you on the line?
I am on the line. Sorry, can you hear me, Madam Chair?
Yes, I can. I'll just-
I apologize.
Yeah.
My iPad died on me and I had to come to another iPad and change names.
Ah.
Sorry about that.
Okay, so I'll very quickly read through this again. We have a covering letter from yourself. We have previous decisions affecting the property. We have a copy of the survey site, plan, floor plans and elevations. Community planning has conditions and forestry is asking for conditions one and two. And we have a number of objectors that corresponded with us on Willow Avenue. And we have one person speaking in opposition. So if I can have you state your name and address for the record, and then you have five minutes to do a brief presentation, because we have a speaker.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time, sorry about that. My name is Russ Gregory. I'm at 18 Paradise Avenue in Markham. I'm the designer and the agent for the owner of 67 Willow Avenue. We've made this application several months back and gone back and forth with the city planner, Kasia. And we came to agreements that she could support our application with her report, which she's done, and I'm sure the committee is, has got that in front of them. The owners would like to build a new house on this property. It is a previously severed lot on Willow Avenue. You do have the file in front of you from the severance. We've designed a new house that is, it stands four stories high with a small master bedroom, fourth floor. The main floor is mostly garage with what we'll call sort of a above-grade basement, I guess. And the owners would like to build this house for themselves to locate in the beaches, or in the beach, I'm sorry. One of the variances we did request was from the, the grade to the ground floor entrance. We would like to increase our height to 1.73 meters from 1.2 meters. The maximum permitted height for all rear exterior walls is 9.5. We're 11.43, but that is due to the, the fourth floor being constructed and the permitted maximum height of all exterior walls. Now, part of the, the reason for the, the three is we're trying to build this house up. We've kept maximum side yards. There are no requirements for side yards or no request for side yard variances. Our front yard setback meets the bylaw. Our rear yard meets the bylaw. So our maximum permitted floor area is 1.3 times the permitted, where 0.0 or 0.6 is allowed. And as it says in the, in the planner's report, it does, in her opinion and my opinion as well, meet the four tests. It is desirable, it does meet the official plan or the conditions of the official plan. It stays in line with the bylaw. And from our point of view and the planners as well, it is desirable to the neighborhood and it will fit in with other houses that are around the immediate vicinity.
Okay, thank you. Panel members, let's hold our questions till after we hear from the opposition. Okay, Ms. Berry, are you there? Do you have, do you have the TV or are you watching this? Because I'm getting a really bad echo. I need the volume to be turned down on all other devices.
Right, can you hear me?
Through, Madam Chair, Maureen, this is Jacob here. We're still getting a significant echo. So if you have any other devices playing the hearing or any music or any sort of electronic sounds, it's going to affect the quality of audio you're coming through as. So I need you to turn those off. Okay, I'm on mute, you now.
Okay, let's try again. Go ahead. Are you using the mic on your computer or, or a different mic? Because now I can't hear you.
On a landline.
You sound very distant.
I'm on a landline.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna put this microphone on mute and I'm going to give you a call on your cell phone, okay?
Hello?
Hi, okay, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Maureen Berry. I live at 68 Willow Avenue. My husband Dave and I have lived here for 23 years. The proposed application is directly across the street from us. We're on the west side. And I am presenting today to object to the application before you. We would like to make it very clear that we are not objecting to a house being built at 67 Willow Avenue. We attended the meetings at St. Aden's Church and appreciated their position that they tried to stay away from a high-density project as it was not in conforming with our neighborhood. And they chose to sell the land and have it divided into four lots. We know there are four houses to be built and one has been completed. It is a two-story house. What we are objecting to is the proposed application for four stories and the square footage. You have received letters from many of our neighbors in objection. Others are still away right now, as it's just the end of the summer and there was only one week to submit a letter. You've received pictures showing the current vacant lot. The elevation- You've received pictures showing the current vacant lot, the elevation from the street, the height difference from the neighbor directly to the south, and adjacent houses showing you the typical sizes. There are 33 houses on Willow Avenue, south of Queen Street, and one duplex. 29 of those houses are two-story. There are three houses that are three-story, that are positioned on the street so they do not stand out and in fact look a similar height to their neighbor due to the slope of the street. The proposed application is a house being built on a piece of land that is significantly higher than all homes on the street. The south end of the lot has a retaining wall, and the house to the south of it is four feet lower. We're asking that this be taken into consideration in your review. A house being built that meets the current bylaw standards will be considerably higher than the other houses on our street. That we have to accept. However, the application before you is asking to exceed the height limit significantly, which will result in a house that towers over all others, and therefore a negative impact on the community. The four lots that have been divided and sold are 25 feet wide. This is similar to most lots on Willow Avenue. The current lot coverage allowed also falls into keeping with the street. The application before you are asking to double the lot coverage allowance and four stories, which is not in keeping with the street. The request is not anywhere near minor. The beach is a unique community that has developed over the years from cottages to family homes. What makes the beach unique is the people, but also the varied houses. Willow Avenue, south of Queen, is particularly unique in that it is a wide street, has beautiful old trees, and houses that were built in twos. My neighbor and I have the same style. The next two have a different style, and so on, and the developer built it like that all the way down to the lake. Most houses have been renovated over the years, and there are some new builds, but they all have fit in nicely with the street. The houses on Willow Avenue are not as large as houses on Monroe or Glen Manor or Pine, to name a few. The size of the house being proposed in the application before you does not fit the lot they have bought and does not fit into the street. If they wanted a house that is over 3,000 square feet, they need to look to another street with similar-sized houses. No one for this development has reached out to the neighbors. We have never seen plans for the proposed house. We ask you to turn down this application in consideration of our community. There are two more houses to be built on that vacant piece of land. Again, due to the height of the land in comparison to the neighboring houses, houses built on this land will stand so much taller than all others, and their driveways will all have a steep grade. Your decision will set the tone for the other two houses and will speak for the residents of Willow Avenue who want their street to remain the size and character that it currently is. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay, thank you. Panel members, do you have any questions of the speaker? Seeing none. Okay, Mr. Gregory, can you speak only to the issues raised, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. And again, I apologize, I'm a little flustered over the technical difficulties we had. My apologies again, but as I reiterated, we are, two of the variances are about the height of the building and the fact that a fourth floor is put on top of the house. My understanding from the planner through discussions is that the fourth floor is permitted. I really don't know how to say it differently. It is an 11 and 1/2 meter tall wall. We kept it to a flat roof to minimize the height of the building and not put a peak roof on it, and that was also discussed with the planner at the time, to just leave it so that it doesn't, the peak roof doesn't tower above the rest of the houses. There are small apartment buildings, four-story, five-story apartment buildings in the immediate vicinity. I, I'm, I think obviously the four tests were met when we went back to the planner several different times, and she asked us to make these variations. We made them. We slid the, at one point, we had the fourth floor right at the back wall of the house. She asked us to slide it towards the front of the house. I didn't necessarily agree with that because I felt it was imposing on the street too much, but as far as the height goes, we could not bring the house down any lower. We've minimized the ceiling heights, and I would ask the committee to consider that in making their decision.
Okay, thank you. Panel members, do you have any questions of Mr. Gregory? Mr. Gregory, I heard mentioned there is another, our house there, and there was a consent, I believe that was part of the consent application. How does this house compare to it in terms of if you were looking at the two side by side, height-wise?
Well, it's, Madam Chair, it's not necessarily a two-story house. It's actually, it's got a sunken, the basement is sunken into the ground a small bit. There is a raise in the land, and it makes it very difficult to grade. My consideration originally was to try and come in at street level, but it was, it was very difficult to put that house down in the ground. So, that said, they have a three-story, but half of the first floor is in the ground, and then two floors above it, yes.
Ms. Valentini, did you have a question?
Yeah, if I could just kind of further follow up on that. So that, I'm assuming we're talking about the house that has already been built on one of the first lots that has been severed. I'm assuming, since we don't have any evidence before us, that there were no variances other than what was granted in the original application for that house. It meets the height.
I believe you're correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Mr. Niffel, did you have a question?
No, I don't have a question, I have a comment.
Okay.
I, um-
Hang on. Mr. Chang, do you have any questions? No? Okay, let's take it into committee, and Mr. Niffel, you can go ahead with your comment.
Madam Chair, I have difficulty supporting the height variances in this particular case. As the, as the objector that spoke mentioned, the property is already very high relative to other properties, which exacerbates the height. Notwithstanding the fact that there are, I think there's a couple of duplexes in the area, the predominant character of this particular street is lower, lower houses, not four-story houses. I think that these variances are generating a form that isn't, not in keeping with the character of the street and the neighborhood, and in that, I agree with the letters of objection. There are a lot of them, and most of the people are making the same point, that the height that's proposed just isn't in keeping with this particular area, and I frankly agree with some. I'm unable to support the height variances in this case.
Okay. Ms. Valentini, did you want to add to that?
I, I agree with Mr. Niffel's comments. I will not, also not be supporting this application. I also think it's important to note that there was a severance, and I know this is a newly created lot. I don't know what, if, if the original severance came forward with houses, four houses of this nature, how that would have played out in terms of the severance, but notwithstanding, I feel that this particular application, both in height and the FSI, is too big for the lot, and I agree with the neighbors' comments. This is an elevated grade to begin with, and I think it's going to dominate the street to have a four-story house in this lot, so I will not be supporting the application either.
Mr. Chang, do you have anything to add, or?
No, I think I agree with both of my colleagues, and I mean, if this building was on Queen Street, then it makes much more sense, but this is a side street with such a huge height and coverage, it just doesn't make sense.
I'm gonna need a motion then.
Madam Chairman, I bring forward a motion that the application be rejected.
Okay, do I have a seconder? Mr. Chang? Okay, I have a motion to refuse the application moved by Mr. Niffel, seconded by Mr. Chang. All in favor? Okay, your application has been unanimously refused. The next item is item number 13. 1474 St. Clair Avenue West. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey site, plan floor plans and elevations, covering letter from Benjamin Larson, the agent, transportation impact study from Lee Consulting Limited, and a presentation package from the agent. We have a report from community planning. They're asking for a condition basically to build the plans submitted, and we also have transportation communication correspondence in opposition from number four, McRoberts, and I'm showing three speakers listed.
Through you, Madam Chair. One of the three speakers, Alex McCulley, of 5 McRoberts Avenue, didn't respond to requests to join the hearing, so he or she is not with us.
Okay. Mr. Larson, are you on the phone, on the line? Hello?
Hi, Benjamin, if you can hear me. You're unmuted, you should be able to speak. I see that you're toggling the mute button. You don't need to. Hi, Ben, I see you're toggling the mute button. You don't need to, you're unmuted right now. You can try speaking.
Okay, Mr. Larson, can you say something?
All right, Ben, I'm gonna give you a call on the cell phone we have on file here.
Hello?
Okay, I can hear you. Can I have you state your name for the record?
Sure, and I apologize for that technical issue. I don't know what that was related to, but my name is Benjamin Larson. I'm a planner from Hunter and Associates Limited, and I am the applicant for the owner of the site.
Okay, I'm going to need you to do a brief presentation. We have two people speaking in opposition. Okay, starting the clock now.
Bram, could you put page two of the briefing presentation on the screen, please? So, I just want to begin by just saying the owners followed a logical process in this project. It began with an informal community meeting in spring 2018, was followed by an SPA submission in fall 2018, and then two SPA resubmissions, and then we made the actual minor variance submission in December 2019. So, what you're gonna see on the AIC is an objection letter from four, McRoberts. I can respond to the issues identified in this letter. You also see a favorable letter from city planning, who was, it was authored by the same city planner that is handling the SPA for the proposal, a favorable letter from city transportation indicating no issues, and there's also a letter from the deputy mayor's office, which outlines the section 45 contribution that the owner has agreed to. So, today you have before you one application. It is a minor variance. If I can turn your attention to the screen, this is a site photo key to, an air photo of the site. The address is 1474 St. Clair Avenue West. It's a corner property, has frontage on St. Clair to the south. At the bottom of the screen, McRoberts to the west on the left of the screen, and it backs onto a public lane. On the site is an L-shaped commercial building. It's one story, and it includes surface parking closer to the street edges. If I can get page three on the screen, please? This page will illustrate the planned context, which as a result of the St. Clair mid-rise bylaw allows for residential intensification in mid-rise forms along St. optimized, use of the streetcar and provide new commercial housing options. So, what we've done on this slide, we've overlaid the mid-rise height permissions from the St. Clair bylaw on the city's land use map. The mid-rise height permissions are shown with those black dashed lines with the numbered values next to them indicating stories and height. You can see the site is in blue in the middle of the image. For the site's block, the zoning allows seven stories plus a mechanical penthouse, which is an all-in height of 29 meters. Also of note, St. Clair is a major street with a 30-meter right-of-way width, and the proposed height is generally a one-to-one relationship with this width. If I can have page four put on the screen, please? This will be a rendering of the proposal. Again, it's eight stories plus an amenity, mechanical penthouse. It's an all-in height of just over 29 meters, which is similar to the St. Clair mid-rise bylaw permission for the site's block. There's a limited elevator overrun that rises to just over 31 meters, which I could talk about later. The building itself is mixed-use. It includes ground floor retail along St. Clair and includes a total of 54 purpose-built rental units. Regarding the massing, key features include a distinctive corner feature to give prominence to the corner of McRoberts and St. Clair. On either side is a five-story street wall with stepbacks above. In the rear of the building, you can see it's angled. This is to generally fit below an angular plane in the rear for transition purposes. If I can have page five put on the screen. In total, you'll see in the notice there are 25 minor variances. To help understand them, we've grouped them into seven categories as shown on the screen. I just want to quickly talk about the one with the blue arrow pointing to it. This is related to maximum height, which is minor variance one. If I could have page six on the screen. Regarding minor variance one, the maximum height in the zoning notice does say 16.5 meters, as opposed to the 24-meter height permission, and this is because the site is less than 30 meters in width, and therefore smaller than the minimum mid-rise lot size. But regarding the site's size, this visual shows the site in a blue color, and it compares the minimum mid-rise lot size in a red outline. So, you can see while the site's width is narrower, its depth exceeds the minimum, and if you compare the lot area, the site's area is actually almost 100% of the minimum mid-rise lot area. And if you compared the height-related variances against the 24-meter height maximum for the site's block, then you will see that the variances are quite reasonable. Also of note, the site abouts a generous six-meter-wide boulevard along McRoberts, which is shown by the green on the left of the image, and it backs onto a public lane, which is shown by the orange. If I could have page nine, please? So, in my opinion, the proposal represents good planning, as the owners proceeded along a well-considered planning process. There are favorable letters from planning staff, transportation staff indicating no issues. The deputy mayor's office has also included their section 45-related letter with that contribution. I think the proposal intensifies the mixed-use designated site along a-
Just as a side note, we don't have that. It was, didn't, didn't come in in time. FYI.
Okay, but I can talk about that, I can talk about that later. It intensifies the mixed-use designated-
Okay, well, you're-
It intensifies the, yep.
Yeah, no, I was just gonna say you're at four and a half minutes, so I guess choose what you want to talk about.
In my opinion, it intensifies the mixed-use designated site along an avenue, along a major street, with a planned right-of-way of 30 meters, which is the one-to-one relationship with, incorporates a height that is generally consistent with the St. Clair bylaw, and in my opinion, the minor variances individually and together meet the four tests, and I can discuss any of them in further detail if you would like.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I think we'll hold any questions from the panel members after we hear from the opposition. So, do I have the residents of number four, McRoberts, on the line?
Through you, Madam Chair. Arvin, are you there? I've unmuted your cell phone. No? Okay, I'm gonna try unmuting Siri.
Right there.
Oh, hi. This is Ms. Paulson?
Yep.
Are you the one going to be speaking on behalf of both of you?
Uh, Arvin, would you like to speak as well?
Okay, you can both speak, not at the same time, and you have a total of five minutes, so, so as you, as you, I guess we'll have one of you speak first, and then when the second person, you have to identify yourself for the record before you start speaking. So, who wants to go first?
That will be me, Ms. Paulson.
All right, so please identify yourself. Name an address for the record.
My name is Siri Paulson, and I live at 4 on McRoberts.
Okay, go ahead.
So, I happen to have owned the house for eight years. It's on the west side of McRoberts, so it's the first house on the street, so almost exactly across the street from the proposed development. What happens at this corner lot will have a large impact on our quality of life and our property value. We are in favor of intensification in our neighborhood, as mentioned, it's an avenue, there's a streetcar right-of-way and so forth, but we're concerned about this level of intensification. There's been only one community meeting several years ago, and we've had no respondents from the developer since then, so we would like to request a deferral- not nine stories, and at eight stories, there's significant shade on our property. We have a garden, our neighbors have gardens, and so the sun is a big part of our, and joint of our properties. Beyond the height variance, they're also asking to have no setbacks or setbacks on the Robert side of the building, which means it will dominate the street eventually, the character of the street will be on what is permitted. There's also a variance requested for parking, fewer resident parking spaces and no visitor parking, and I don't see any mention of retail parking, given this is a mixed-use building. Parking is already a major end of the street, we don't have a driveway and have great difficulty with parking anywhere near our house. Our broader concern is about setting a precedent for this number of variances, given that the other corner lot on McRoberts, fourteen eighty Saint Clair, is also a future development to happen, but whatever happens in fourteen seventy-four Saint Clair will be magnified once fourteen eighty Saint Clair is redeveloped. We ask that you take that into consideration.
Hello, my name is Arvik Giptha, and I also live at four, McRoberts Avenue, and I just have a couple of comments as well. On the matter of parking, there it's not only that we're going to be, they're reducing the number of parking spaces, but the building is actually going to be put over top of existing parking spaces, so we're actually losing parking that's being allocated to the commercial businesses currently, so that's going to exacerbate the issue. Also, just one comment about the height restriction, I've heard a lot of numbers, sixteen point five, twenty-four, and twenty-nine, plus some mechanical equipment that's gonna raise the overall height. If I understand correctly, the building is restricted to sixteen point five, the twenty-four comes into the picture, you know, if one takes into consideration the overall area of the building, it seems to me, just looking at these, at the letter and the numbers, that there are two separate variances, one for this five, this five times, the square footage, I'm sorry, I don't know quite what that number is called, and they're looking for a variation to have that increase to five point one, some think that seems to be one separate and distinct variance that they're seeking. The height restriction is the second one, it seems like going from sixteen point five to twenty-nine, I guess I don't know legally what that means for minor, but it certainly seems like a pretty major variance. Well, that's it, no more comments.
Okay, thank you. Panel members, do you have any questions of the speaker? Okay, thank you, seeing none. Ms. Gomez, are you on the line?
Good morning, yes, I am in the line, Madam Chair, and I would like to request your permission to also share my time with my neighbor, Neela Gupta, who's also in the line, and would like also share her opinions on this.
Okay, people are supposed to be registered in advance, but I will allow you to split your time, so I need you to state your name and address, please.
Thank you very much, my name is Paola Gomez, and I am at one-one-one, McRoberts Avenue.
Okay, so I'm gonna start the clock in a minute, like, but when your neighbor comes on, she needs to state her name and address for the record, okay? So go ahead.
Thank you, I am here as a concerned neighbor, bringing voices of other community members as the applicant had actually felt to involve community members in this conversation. I know he made reference to an informal community consultation somewhere in two thousand eighteen, when we had, as you know, a different city councilor. Let me also clarify that that letter that you don't have before you, that is from the councilor's office, came to be as a part of our inquiry, neighbor's inquiry to the councilor's office about this development, because yet we had no received information, and from our consulting to neighbors around, only few houses received the letter that Siri refers to at the very beginning. Something else that is, and I apologize for my ignorance in this, in this aspect, but something else that I don't understand is how twenty-five variances is considered a minor, a minor process. From the, from the height of the building, which it is already explained that the allowance is five story to double it to nine, I believe that's a big change, in addition to the parking issues and setbacks that Siri has spoke to. Through this process, I had had the opportunity to review other documents, including the city-initiated study for Saint Clair, that provided some guiding principles, and when I look at those guiding principles, my biggest concern is that this proposed project violates many of those principles, including in page twelve of that study, principle number three, the massing, the scaling height of a new building should respect, be compatible with and provide transition to the nearby low-rise residential neighborhoods. And I think this building, for what we are seeing in front of us, will definitely take a big impact into our communities, especially because we'll actually be blocking Erosco Park, which is right in front of the building. I do believe that this is a case of a, of a large building wanting to be placed on a small lot, and I also, I'm also very concerned about the precedent that this will create. There are many questions from fifty-five units, where they are asking to even a reduction of parking space to only twenty-one parking space, like, there are many questions that we will require some answers, and if the committee is not ready to reject today, a deferral would be necessary, because I do believe that the developer needs to take into consideration the impact of their, of their project in our communities, and I would like to give a space to my neighbor to talk.
Okay, okay ma'am, you have about a minute and a half, what's your name and address, please? Hello?
My apologies, I think you will need to unmute from your end, because she will be muted, she's in a different phone, she's not with me right in this space.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, we can't do that, because you're, we only have people connected that registered in advance, so I thought she was with you in the same room, so I can't, we can't connect to your neighbor.
Apologies, I understood she's connected, because we are also communicating through, we are also communicating through messages right now.
Okay, well
So I think, I understand, and I apologize for that, I have to admit that we also organize in a very marathonic time, a time that allows us to talk to city councilor, which, as you can see, the city councilor connected to the applicant, and now the applicant is using that in their advantage, which I consider also very problematic, because they are not taking into consideration the real concerns of community members.
Panel members, do you have any questions of the speaker?
No.
No questions? Okay, Mr. Larson?
Yeah, so, I mean, I'll just begin by responding to four, McRoberts, regarding the process, like we said before, there was an informal public meeting, I understand that in the range of twenty people attended it, most understood there was a mid-rise vision, some did not know about the mid-rise vision along Saint Clair, which is kind of out of right. There were some materiality concerns, questions about the laneway, that kind of stuff, but it was clear that we were gonna be submitting for an SPA, so we made our SPA submission. All of that is publicly accessible on the AIC, we've made multiple resubmissions on the SPA front, we then made our minor variance submission in December, and we emailed the deputy mayor's office in January after we made the submission to let them know, and they replied to let us know they would contact us if there were any questions regarding the minor variance notice itself, everything was done as it should be with notice signs and mail-out that the city typically does. Regarding deferral, I don't think it's warranted, this has gone through a lengthy process, and there is a planned vision, which started from an avenue study that began in two thousand five, with the actual bylaw permissions being approved in two thousand nine along Saint Clair. Regarding the height, again, this is a planned context, as shown in my planning rationale, of seven to nine stories in the immediate context, this is also proportionate to the thirty-meter right-of-way. On the site's block, the mid-rise permission is twenty-four meters plus five-meter mechanical, which is a twenty-nine meter permission. City planning is in support of the minor nature of the variances, as shown in their report. I want to also indicate transition, we have an angular plane in the rear, and if Bram can pull up page twenty-four of our presentation, you can see the project is generally below the angular plane in the rear, the only penetration is limited to an elevator overrun, as shown by the blue on the screen right now. If you look at the shadow studies, which are also publicly accessible, you can see that the proposed shadows are generally in accordance with the approved mid-rise shadowing, and this is due to the angle back, and even a five-story, sixteen-point-five-meter-tall building would still shadows, would still shadow properties to the north, in particular the June test period, I want to indicate that shadows were almost entirely limited to the public lane and the mixed-use designated sites behind, or to the west and behind the property. In terms of functional elements, they're all tucked inside the building, like the loading space, parking is below grade, the main outdoor amenities deck on the rooftop is oriented towards Saint Clair. Regarding the McRoberts setback, that was brought up by four, McRoberts, there's a zero setback, but I noted in my presentation, there is a six-meter-wide boulevard width along McRoberts, so I think zero meters is appropriate, given that generous boulevard width. Regarding resident parking, I think it's generally intended that people in this building will rely on active transportation, or public transit, or bikes to get around, there's a shortfall of six residential spaces, but this is supported by city transportation services, as well as Lee Consulting, they're, in their opinion, it's an appropriate supply for the projected demand. There's also a car share included in the project, so if somebody, a tenant who lives in this building does not have a car, and they want to use a car, they can go down and use a car share to fulfill their transportation needs. Again, there's a nicely improved transit system, Saint Clair operates and dedicate, the Saint Clair streetcar, Route five-one-two, operates in dedicated lanes along Saint Clair, that has ten minutes or less frequency, so it's a very frequent streetcar, there's a stop very conveniently close by at Caledonia, so in my opinion, that this will just take great use of that transportation context. Regarding the short-term parking, there's a deficiency of three spaces, there's ample, in Lee's opinion and in city transportation's opinion, there's ample supply via the on-street Green Pea parking, there's also two Green Pea lots close by, Lee Consulting did a survey of parking utilization, and they concluded that there's an abundance of parking supply to meet the three parking space demands. Regarding the retail parking, if you look at bylaw five-sixty-nine, two thousand thirteen, you don't even need retail parking if you have less than two hundred square meters of retail GFA, which is as the case in this project with a hundred and eighty-seven square meters. Regarding the fact that there are twenty-five minor variances, we've done our best, if you go to page nine of the presentation, you can see that we grouped them into the seven categories, and if you look individually, you'll see that each of them are, in my opinion, pretty minor when you dig into deep as to what they actually are. Regarding the sixteen-point-five-meter maximum height, like I said, that's the base height, the actual mid-rise height permission on this block is twenty-four meters, so yes, it does look like it's a bit extensive, going from sixteen-point-five up to the proposed height, but when you compare the proposed height against the twenty-four plus five, which is twenty-nine meters all-in, it's pretty comparable. Regarding the five times density
Uh, Mr. Larson, like, you're now at five minutes, over five minutes, and I think you're going a little beyond addressing the concerns that were raised, so can you wrap it up, please?
Okay.
Thanks.
Sure, just regarding the five times density, we're just slightly above a five-point-one-five total density, so I think that is pretty minor. I think I've covered a lot of the other issues raised by the second speaker.
Yeah, I'd like to go to my, the panel members might have some questions, so
Certainly, certainly.
Yeah, I'd like
I think I've covered what we're
Yeah, I think you've covered everything. Panel members, do you have any questions?
I have one question, if it can be answered quickly and simply. I'm unable to clarify from the drawings, the mitigation method that you're using along the back of the building where it's terraced down. If you could go to the seven, if Bram could put up the seventh floor plan, could the applicant walk us through what happens when you walk out of the unit? There's a, there's a hatched area, then there's a dotted area, then there's a terrace, what, I gather there is a number of layers to mitigating overlook and privacy, and I just wanted to understand them, because I'm not getting that from the drawings.
So, I mean, one element is the terrace nature of the project, and you can see at the outer edge of each terrace, there's that green roof band, and that is kind of like a thickness, you can see, if you can really zoom in, you can see there's a point-nine-meter depth to the actual balcony, but beyond that, there's a bit of a band that prevents you from getting too close to the edge, in my opinion, that's what helps prevent people from getting too close and peering down.
The bands beyond the balcony railing, right?
Yes.
Okay. Good, that clarified, and the second question I had was, the planning department in an added report has suggested that if there is approval for this proposal, that it'd be subject to development occurring in keeping with site plan and elevation drawings that are on file with us, but as I understand, you're in the middle of site plan control application review, how fluid is the project? Because if we tie it to drawings today, and if the site plan is not close to finalization, we might end up with another revision. Can you clarify whether you have difficulty with that planning department requirement?
No, and I would say we're not in the middle, we're at the end of the site plan process, we've cleared up a lot of issues, and that's reflected in the last set of planning comments from planning and urban design, we're down to giving material sample boards, doing unit paver specs, so I'm comfortable, and I'm okay with how Olivia has authored that condition.
Fine, thank you.
Any further questions, panel members? Seeing none, we'll take it into committee discussion.
Madam Chairman, I think any of these intensification projects are going to result in a little discomfort, because it's a big change to existing conditions, but this proposal is well-grounded in policy research and policy implementation actions. I think the applicant is to be commended for the manner in which he's approached the integration of this higher-density use on Saint Clair and his transition back to residential. As his answers indicated, he's obviously very enthusiastic about the project, I think that his mission, both verbally and the one presented to us, the agenda is extensive, it addresses any concerns I might have had about this project fitting in and complementing the existing neighborhood. I'm very supportive of the application sub, and I would be happy to recommend approval.
Okay, any comments, members, or are you okay with Mr. Niffel moving approval? No, go ahead.
I'm good with Mr. Niffel.
All right, go ahead.
Madam Chairman, I'd recommend approval of the application, subject to the planning department recommending condition that development occur in accordance with the site plan and elevation drawings that are on file with us.
I think there's also a transportation report, there's no conditions, okay.
I don't think there were conditions on that report, though.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve, including the August twenty-eighth planning report, condition moved by Mr. Niffel, do I have a seconder? Mr. Chang?
Was there, sorry, just to interrupt, just to interrupt, I'm fine with him seconding it, but was there any other condition, like, was there a section forty-five contribution condition that the, we didn't get that, right?
No, we didn't get any of that, and usually that's done through the planning negotiations. Okay, so the motion was moved by Mr. Niffel, seconded by Mr. Chang, all in favor? The application has been unanimously approved. Thank you to all the speakers. Item number fourteen, six-eighty-six A Gerard Street East, we have before us a copy of the plan of survey site, plan floor plans and elevations, a location map showing precedences of rear setbacks, we have forestry asking for condition number two, support from the vice president Chinese Chamber of Commerce, we have another form letter signed by seventy-seven Simpson, and a fourteen signature petition in support. Do I still have an opposition speaker? Yes? Okay, can I have the agent? We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, a location map showing precedences of rear setbacks. We have forestry asking for condition number two, support from the Vice President Chinese Chamber of Commerce. We have another form letter signed by 77 Simpson and a 14 signature petition in support. Do I still have an opposition speaker? Yes? Okay, can I have the agent please identify herself for the record? Kelly, you there?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Kelly, you've been unmuted. Can you say something into your cellphone? Madam Chair, maybe we want to come back to this one. I had phoned Kelly quite a few times to get her to join, and she left quite a few times, so I'm not sure if there's technical issues, but I've sent her an email and hopefully she'll respond.
Is Valerie Ma, is she on the line or everybody else?
Valerie Ma and Lawrence are both here.
They're all on the line. Okay, yeah, let's move on. Okay, panel members, we're going to go to item number 15, 255 Gray Street. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, email correspondence from traffic planning technologists. We have correspondence in support from 257, which is adjacent, and we don't have any opposition speakers. Can I have the agent please identify himself for the record?
Yes, it's Enzo Locassano.
Thank you. Panel members, I don't think we need a presentation. Do you have any questions of the agent?
I have one question. The recommendation that we have from Development Engineering is, I understand, it basically precludes one of the variances.
It's transportation, Mr. Niffel.
Variance number two, sorry, transportation. Basically, they're recommending against variance number two. Have you had any subsequent conversations with them since filing the application?
We didn't. We did try to contact, well, we had spoken to the examiner because number two is actually not a variance. If you read the bylaw, it specifically has no reference to the overhang. It only says, "Building or structure in the residential zone may be no closer than 2.5 meters from the original center line of a lane." So this is to the building face. It has nothing to do with the overhang, so it's not a bylaw issue, but it might be a building standards or transportation standards issue, which we would deal with at building permit.
Mr. Locassano, would, is there any percentage in deleting that variance if you say it's not a variance?
Yeah, no, we can delete it because it's not a variance. We already have 2.5 meters from the center line of the lane, and we have the one meter from the rear yard.
So do you.
So I'm not sure why that's even there.
So do you want to formally delete it then? Because, I mean, we can't delete it, but you can if you want to make that decision and...
Sure, we can delete it.
Yeah, I don't know what your zoning review says, but I hope you cross-referenced them. But anyway, so we're formally deleting variance number two?
Yeah, because again, it's not, the overhang has nothing to do.
Okay.
Again, if I'm reading it incorrectly, I'm looking at the zoning bylaw right now, sentence two of 1054070, and it says there's no, unless I'm missing something here, there's no reference to overhang.
Well, if.
Okay, but in the report that we've got, which is from Development Planning and Review, I don't know if you've got it, it says, "We require that the plans be revised to have the garage, including the overhang, setback from the center line of the lane a minimum of 2.5 meters." Your proposal doesn't comply with that because you've got an overhang that, as I understand, it extends into that setback.
Correct. Again, we can move, we can, we can meet that if this becomes an issue.
I think, is Aaron here, I just strongly recommend you that don't take that out.
Okay.
We are going to approve it, and we will add a condition that should be subject to approval from transportation.
Okay, no, that's fair.
That would make more sense because I don't want you to delete the variance. There's only no.
Okay, hang on.
Okay.
Madam Deputy Secretary-Treasurer, can you please weigh in here? Because if we are, if transportation's asking them for that variance or the condition, you can't do the opposite, ask them to do the opposite from what they're saying, right?
Right, so this is based on a zoning review. Applicants should be reviewing all their variances to make sure they understand them and agree with them, first of all. If you can't approve a variance and then remove it by way of a condition, so either it's staying in and you're going to consider it, or the applicant's going to delete it because it's no longer a variance. It can't be both. It has to be one or the other. Transportation is concerned that that overhang, the distance of that overhang to the center line of, is maybe a problem in the future.
Okay, so, Mr. Locassano, and just one more time.
Yes.
It's up to you whether you want to leave the variance in or not. Either way, we're going to only deal with the variances before us.
Well, no, I just wanted to know if the committee members have an issue with this.
Well, that would be, but that would be reflected in how we end up voting on it, so I.
Like, we're talking about a garage and 12 inches here, so I can move it back if it's a real issue. I just don't see how an overhang can be an issue with a garage in a laneway.
Well, as it stands now, transportation has an issue with it, and the committee has looked at all the materials that are submitted, so we would just make a decision based on either three variances or two variances.
Okay, well, let's remove it then. I don't want it to be an issue.
All right, so you want to delete variance number two?
Yes.
Okay. All right, panel members, do you have any further questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll take it into committee. Oh, you had a question, Ms. Valentini?
No, no, I was just gonna.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm jumping the gun.
Yeah, no, we're good. Go ahead, we're in committee.
Now that the second variance has been removed, I had an issue with it. I was going to recommend refusal of the second variance. Mr. Locassano has taken care of that for me, so I would like to bring a motion forward for approval of the application as amended.
Okay, do I have a second or? Okay, motion to approve the application as amended with variance number two deleted by Ms. Valentini, seconded by Mr. Chang. All in favor? Your application has been unanimously approved. Thank you. Can we go back to 14? Okay, we're going back to item 14 here. 686A Gerard Street. Yeah, okay, Ms., is this Kelly?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, good afternoon. I'm just.
Yeah, I need your name for the record.
Yes, my name is Kelly Nguyen, and I'm the agent for the application.
Okay, I need you to do a very brief presentation as to why you need the variances, and we have one person speaking in opposition.
Two.
Or actually, no, one is in support, right?
Oh, sorry, remember.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Yes, so we are proposing a one-story rear addition to accommodate the kitchen and the 30 seating for the restaurant. The bylaw is required 7.5, and we are proposing 5.03, and I think this is a minor variance by this condition. We have support from the neighborhood and the Chinese Chamber Commerce to support this The owner has a restaurant for more than 25 years in its general town, and they decided to relocate it to afford the rent, so that's why we moved to the next door.
Okay, I'm gonna, oh, did you, were you finished, sorry, or not?
Yeah, I'm finished here.
Yeah, okay, I'm gonna go to the opposition, and then I'll have you back, and then I'll also have the Vice President of the Chamber of Commerce speak, okay? So, Mr. LaPianta, are you on the line?
I am. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and the committee members. How are you?
We're good. We need your name and address for the record, please.
It's Lawrence LaPianta, primary landlord, owner, and primary resident at 686 Gerard Street.
Okay, you have five minutes, starting now, to state your position.
Madam Chair, I'm just speaking to the purpose of the application, seeing as that it's asking for an addition to the future expansion of an existing restaurant, which, when I purchased my home in November 2015, I purchased a home that was located between two residences, which meant that I had tenants, I had regular neighbors on both sides, and the restaurant close by, approximately, you know, nine meters away. The restaurant's a place that I frequent often, it's a part of the community, and I appreciate it very much, very successful, been around for 25 years, but unfortunately, this also speaks to my ability to, my right of quiet enjoyment of my own home. Basically, they're going to be applying to build a structure that's twice the size of the first floor to accommodate a commercial kitchen. It's going to have HVAC exhaust hood, they operate seven days a week. All of this stuff is going to be directly impacting my enjoyment of my home and of my backyard and that of my tenant on the top floor. At no point was any of this stuff really ever addressed with my help. There were some attempts made to discuss it further, but nothing was ever followed up on, and I've never been made aware of any plans or any intention that they have to accommodate any of the things that are required as part of a commercial kitchen. We have a shift aircon wall, the, their washroom for the restaurant will be in the basement. We live on the main floor in the basement of our own home, and essentially it'll end up happening that we, just as a residential, we'll fall on a regular basis, we can hear people walking around inside, let alone using it as a commercial restaurant. So, a lot of these things were never adjusted, they've become major concern, mainly that I have also never purchased a home adjacent to a restaurant, purchased a home between two residences, and now my right of enjoyment is being compromised so that they can move a commercial kitchen next door to my home.
Okay, panel members, do you have any questions of the speaker? Ms. Nguyen, can you please?
Carl's speaking.
I'm sorry? Oh, Carl, you're on mute, sorry, I didn't.
Pardon me.
No problem.
Yeah, wrong button. The gentleman just spoke, he's right next door, right, at 686?
Yeah.
Okay, the one concern I had with the application is that in addition to the extension, which is a kitchen, there's a rooftop patio that does not now exist that will be there, and I'd like to know if you have any concerns about the rooftop patio and its impact on your property because you're directly attached.
Hi there, yeah, so from the plans I've seen, I don't even see a plan for a rooftop patio, so I don't, I don't know if that's ever even told me. I just see the one-story addition, nothing about a rooftop patio. So that is another concern, a major.
You don't see, you don't see the drawings that we do. You're just calling in, or do you see the drawings?
I have a, I have a two-story rooftop for a patio.
You need to look at drawing A2.
Maybe we can put it up on the screen here.
Can he see it, though?
A2, I don't know.
If it's on the screen, I can.
If you look at the left side, there's a rooftop patio.
Yeah, that would essentially be, people would be standing over and standing in my backyard.
Okay, and you didn't know about that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
No.
Madam Deputy Secretary-Treasurer, should that have been put in the, in the purpose? That there's a deck on top? It doesn't show any seating or anything, but.
On the elevations, it shows a small little railing, but I'm concerned with the impact of that on adjacent property, particularly since the gentleman didn't even seem to know it was part of the proposal.
I'm just wondering if it is, actually, perhaps, Ms. Nguyen, can you answer regarding the deck? What's the purpose of the deck?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, so the deck is just for the kitchen hood. There is no patio for the restaurant. It's just purely for the kitchen hood location.
For the kitchen.
Then why does it have a railing around the deck?
The railing is just for the protection of our, but that's a declaration, no. There is no asset for the restaurant for that.
All right, Ms. Nguyen, is there anything else you have to add to respond, in response to the issues raised by your neighbor?
Well, the thing is that the restaurant is really small right now. It cannot be able to have a kitchen and extra seating for 30 seating that we're proposing, and it's been approved last year for the restaurant. So this is just another extension to accommodate the extra space that we need.
Panel members, do you have any questions before I go to Valerie Ma?
So. It's a 1.5 meter, sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chang, I didn't, I didn't hear you.
I have a question to the applicant, but I can let Valentini speak first.
Okay, sure. All right, Ms. Ma, are you there?
Valerie Ma, 41 Melbourne Road, but Vice President of the Chinese Chamber of Commerce at Broadfield Gerard.
Yeah, no, go ahead. We're running way behind. I know you're in support, so if you can make it as brief as possible, but you do have five minutes.
I do understand the concern of the neighbor next door, but we do have storefronts along that street, and my concern is because I want the 25-year history to continue and the fact that the young, the children of the owner want to continue the business, especially at this particular time. We've lost one restaurant in December, that was one in 25 years, and the neighborhood is changing. It's, we're trying to be much more positive and more inclusive, and that's why I want to make sure that this restaurant continues.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Nguyen, so, Mr. Chang, did you want to go ahead with your question now for the agent?
Yes, so as you can see, the variance you're asking for is roughly about 2.5 meters more than what it was allowed, and I'm just wondering about how many tables or what's you are increasing with that number.
The original proposal, we only have around like, maybe 12 or 20, I think it's like 16 chairs, and we are, we are approved for 30 seating, so this is give up the extra seating for 30 seating plus a kitchen.
Maybe I'll ask you in a different way. So, in order to have 30 seats, you will need this variance to be approved?
Yes.
Okay.
Are there any further questions, panel members?
Just, I'm probably stating the obvious, but could you just confirm for me, this will not be the longest building in the block along this side of Gerard, is that correct? Based on sort of the location map and, you know, it looks like there are other buildings in this vicinity that extend further beyond what your client is asking for, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. We have some data that some other buildings is actually, will be beyond what we're proposing, and we're just asking for 2.5 meter of the bylaw. Yeah.
Okay, are there any other questions, panel members? Okay, seeing none, let's take it into committee.
Madam Chairman, I'd appreciate some advice from Anita. I don't have trouble with the application except for that deck, and it's unusual, you don't, you don't call the space where the mechanical equipment is a deck and then put a railing around it. I don't want to see it used as outdoor dining, and I'm looking for some advice on how one would place that in an approval. If you say that the deck is not permitted, is that an appropriate way to? If you say that the deck is not permitted, is that an appropriate way to go?
Can you not say that it can't be used for...
Not permitting it at all would be easier to enforce than permitting it and then having uses restricted. If it's a restaurant patio, I believe it's probably too close to a residential neighborhood that they would have to come back to committee.
So just, so it would be better to just say that the second floor deck is not permitted?
You could, if you wanted to, yeah. I don't know how that, because there is also a, just trying to...
Yeah, if that is being used, they would increase the commercial usage of that FSI, it's right now connected to the residential unit.
You could restrict the size of the deck if that's a concern, if it's just for resident, if it's just residential, I'm just trying to find the floor plan that shows where the access is, because there's a big stairwell.
Oh, here, just a minute, I've got it, it's on A-two.
Right, so the stairwell to the deck is from the outside, it's not from the, is it from the apartment as well? Sorry, I'm just...
Well, there's an entrance from, if A-two shows an entrance from inside.
Okay, and then there's the stairway back.
There's a kitchen area, yeah.
If you look at A-five, there's also a little like ladder on the exterior, yeah, there you go, so, it doesn't look like it's going to be for outdoor dining, but...
If you look the rear, at the rear elevation, there's a stairway.
Yeah.
There is, oh.
So like the ladder, yeah. I just would hate this to come back and have a fully functioning restaurant up on that roof, which I think would be a tickable imposition, and I'm just looking for a condition that would prevent that.
The stairway is just through the base, you're talking about E-jointing, and the other access is just a ladder at the back on A-six.
Yeah.
It's an outdoor staircase that goes to this deck on E-joints.
The applicant indicated that it would be used by the staff of the restaurant, so if you restrict it not to be used for the restaurant, I don't know if that would take that into consider, consideration as well. And then, again, if somebody's sitting up there, there's a complaint to the city when they go out, I don't know how they're going to enforce who gets to use the deck. You could reduce the size of the deck and perhaps eliminate the stairway from the ground, I don't know if that meets building code, though.
Or fires.
If we just said that the new roof deck on, a new, a new roof deck on the, on the extension is not permitted, would, would that work? Because the applicant's point was it's for people to go out there and service the mechanical equipment, well, it's fine, but, and then I wouldn't call that a deck, that's roof, and it's similar to all other roofs. But I really, I'm very uncomfortable approving this and allowing a deck on the back that we haven't put restrictions on.
Well, you could try a motion with that condition and see where it goes.
Okay, are we in committee, can I do that now?
Yeah, go ahead.
Madam Chairman, notwithstanding the concerns raised, I think the largest potential problem with this application, because it does in fact reflect other conditions along the street, but the large problem to me is this second floor deck, which it says it's a new second floor deck. I'd be prepared to recommend or to move a motion of approval of the application, subject to forestry condition number two, and the condition that the second floor deck is to be removed from the proposal.
Okay, so I have that motion as stated by Mr. Niffl, do I have a seconder? Seconded by Mr. Cheng, all in favor? Okay, the application has been approved unanimously with those conditions. Item sixteen was with, was, we deferred it, right? Okay. And the next item's item seventeen, but I'd like to take a five-minute break, because we've been going for, since eleven here, and we're still on the morning, and we have four left. So, let's take five minutes and come back.
One-story addition.
Can people hear me? So anybody's in there cannot hear?
Yeah, but YouTube.
But are they listening? Okay, so we, all right, yeah, I just, okay, just through you, Madam Chair, we're now at one forty-nine, and we have one, two, three, four more items from the morning session to go, some of those are contested. So for the people who were to join the hearing today at one-thirty, if you'd like to leave the meeting right now, that's fine, you can, well, we will post a sign on YouTube to say what time we're going to reconvene. I believe the chair will probably call a short lunch break after we finish the morning session, and so you can leave, and like I said, we will post something on YouTube telling you which time we will be back in the room to start the afternoon session. Thank you.
I'm ready, yeah, I'm not sure if I'm missing, Carl's not back. Okay, so nineteen, there's no opposition anymore?
Yeah, they didn't answer your phone.
Nineteen, sixteen, eighteen are not contested, one to go.
Sixteen's done.
Seventeen.
Seventeen is okay.
Nineteen.
So it looks like only twen, number twenty, so maybe it'll...
Nineteen to eighteen are not.
No.
Nineteen and eleven.
Nineteen is also not, apparently they haven't answered the call, so...
Well, okay.
I mean, unless, unless they come, come in, but, yeah. Okay, I guess I have to wait.
Erin might be there.
Erin, are you there?
Is it Carl?
Nope.
We don't have a work phone.
No. Has any, I guess nobody knows what it's doing outside.
It's supposed to rain around now, and then clear up about like three, four.
Oh, yeah? My, my station said it was supposed to rain around noon and then clear up.
They're always out there.
I know.
And they're never raining.
Oh, I got Carl, okay. Ready? Okay, item number seventeen, four-thirty Gladstone Avenue, we have before us a copy of the Plan of Survey Site Plan, Floor Plans and Elevations, covering letter from the agent, as well as the solicitor from where unfolds, and I have no further correspondence. Okay, who's, is the agent speaking, or, or the solicitor?
Hello, this is Sylvain Rollo, I'm the solicitor for the applicant here, and I'm speaking, happy to make a presentation if you want, or happy to answer any questions.
We'll probably go to questions, but I'll just double-check with my panel members here. Are you okay to go to questions, or do you need, yeah, okay, so let's go to, do you have any questions?
I have one simple question, is I understand that this variance is here because it was overlooked that some of the construction that took place was not approved, and this is basically, you're catching up on, on those approvals, am I, is, that's not a very good way of explaining it, but it doesn't sound like we're here to look at something particularly new so much as something that was overlooked in the past.
The construction occurred in two thousand and two, and the, the variances are to regularize that, we're unsure why the permits weren't obtained, it seems that there was no, no zoning issue back then, it's only under the new bylaw, so because it took so long to get these permits, the new zoning kicked in, and that's why we're now required to get the variances prior to getting the permits.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
Okay, anything further? If not, we'll take it into committee.
Madam Chairman, I, I support this application, I don't see any, any downside to it, it basically is recognizing existing condition, the use is, is one that is desperately needed, and there are no objections that I can see, so, Madam Chairman, I have approval of the application without conditions.
I'll second, I second it.
All right, motion to approve, moved by Mr. Niffl, seconded by Ms. Valentini, all in favor, applications unanimously approved, and please note that Mr. Cheng was not present for the vote. Okay, next item is item number eighteen, six ninety to six ninety-two College Street, we have before us a copy of the Plan of Survey Site Plan, Floor Plans and Elevations, as well as a covering letter from Roman Sapp, the agent, correspondence between the local councilor's office, as well as Jeremy Elhad, Elhadad, the agent, and correspondence in support from six eighty-eight College Street, which is adjacent. Is the agent there?
Roman Sapp, agent, the owner of the property.
Okay, panel members, do, don't think we need a presentation, do you have any questions of the agent?
No.
No questions? Okay, let's take it into committee for a decision.
The only, the only question I had, sorry, was somewhere in the presentation, the applicant indicates that there are measures, measures to, for overlooking privacy are being explored, what exactly does that mean?
We had discussions with, with planning staff during the course of, of the back-and-forth, and those included screening the windows with privacy louvers, or potentially other mitigating measures like OP, window screening, stuff like that.
And the project's subject to site plan control, right?
It is not, no.
It's not, okay.
Any further questions?
Can you just clarify for me, what are the required parking spaces on the variance, is it for three or thirteen? I just have a glitch in my, sorry, my agenda. Is it thirteen?
I think it's three.
I thought it was three.
I think it's three.
Is it supposed to be three, yes.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I'm just now looking, I assumed as I read through the whole application, now I'm looking at it going, oh my God, this is thirteen, but okay, that's what I thought, thank you.
Okay, are there any further questions? Seeing none.
I, I don't have any questions, but I'm ready to move a motion.
Yeah, go ahead, go for it.
I, in reviewing the application, I think the requested variance is in this case are minor, in fact, even the parking is, it's only three spaces requested, and there's zero being provided, which I believe is an existing condition, given the location on College Street, there's access to transit, and I think, in my view, it needs the four tests, so I'd like to bring a motion forward for approval of the application.
Okay.
I'd please just support the motion, I'd second the motion.
Okay, motion to approve, moved by Ms. Valentini, seconded by Mr. Niffl, all in favor?
I have to check, please.
I'm sorry?
I have to absent on this, I joined in the middle, so I'll just pass.
Okay, we'll note that then. Okay, so all in favor, the application has been unanimously approved, with Mr. Cheng abstaining from the vote. All right, the next item is item number nineteen, one seventy-six Hammersmith Avenue, we have before us a copy of the Plan of Survey Site Plan, Floor Plans and Elevations, we have justification of the variances from Mr. Fujiwara, the agent, decision summary of approved GFA floor space index and/or reduced side yard setbacks in the neighborhood, a staff report from forestry asking for condition number two, and we had speakers listed in opposition from number one seventy-eight, but they did not join, so, can I have the agent please identify himself for the record?
Yes, I'm David Fujiwara, and I'm the agent for the owners.
Okay, panel members, I think we can go straight to questions, do you have any questions of the agent?
I'm probably stating the obvious, but many of these variances, notwithstanding the parking space one, you're building on an existing foundation, so most of these are pre-existing conditions?
Yes, all except them for FSI.
Yes, that's right, okay, and in terms of other neighboring properties, well, you're not getting a height variance, so there are the two stories on the street, as I recall.
There are mostly two-story houses on the street.
Okay, thank you.
Even a third story on a couple of the houses.
Any further questions, panel members?
No.
Okay, seeing none, let's take it into committee then.
Madam Chair, I would like to bring a motion forward for approval of this application, this is, in my view, meets what's currently existing on the street, there are other two-story houses in the area, and since they're, the applicant's building on an existing foundation, many of these conditions are pre-existing, so, in my view, this meets the four tests, and I'd like, the motion is for approval, subject to urban forestry condition number two.
Okay, motion to...
I agree, would second the motion.
Okay, motion to approve, including forestry number, condition number two, moved by Ms. Valentini, seconded by Mr. Niffl, all in favor. Your application has been unanimously approved. Okay, the final item for the morning session is eleven C Fourth Avenue, we have before us a copy of the Plan of Survey Site Plan, Floor Your application has been unanimously approved. Okay, the final item for the morning session is eleven C, Fourth Avenue, we have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, forestry is again asking for condition number two, correspondence in opposition from number thirteen and fifteen, and I'm showing both of those, um, address, uh, individuals wanting to speak, and then there was also a letter from number twenty-two C fourth in opposition. Can I have the agent please state his name for the record?
Madam Chair, my name is Enzo Locasano, I'm the agent for this application.
Okay, Mr. Locasano, can you please do a brief presentation, no more than five minutes, we have two people speaking in opposition.
Okay. Uh, we are constructing a three-story, uh, building, um, with, uh, with four units. Uh, what we've tried to do is, uh, maintain the front yard, uh, setback requirement, and also leave, uh, the position in the same spot as the existing building, uh, the setback on the west side is also, uh, at the same position of the existing building, uh, the length of building, uh, that we're looking at is very, uh, similar to many of the buildings in the area, um, listing all the way from nineteen point five to twenty-three point two, there's, uh, approximately eleven homes that are over twenty meters in length, um, the setback, uh, a lot of the setback requirements are very minor, and they're off of, uh, front platform porch, um, with regards to the, the side yard setbacks, as you can see, even our adjacent neighbors, uh, they're also, uh, even tighter than what we're showing, where they're only, uh, one foot from set, uh, side yards, uh, up to three foot. Now, we are proposing, uh, one point two meters on the one side, and zero on the west side, uh, which is similar to what's there now. Uh, with regards to the height, um, we are slightly over at ten point five eight, uh, over the require, over the permitted, uh, ten meters, uh, and again, with regards to the depth, we are very much in keeping with what's there, uh, in the area, and I think, uh, we're fulfilling a need for units, uh, that is, uh, that is a requirement, uh, for the city of Toronto and for the area, uh, currently, there are no parking spaces available onsite anyway, uh, so we do, we do recognize that we are short for parking spaces, and there is plenty of parking in the area, uh, on many of the, uh, on our street and the side streets, um, other than that, that's all I really have. And we feel, uh, we feel that this application, uh, meets the four tests, um, there's, uh, there's many three-story, uh, houses, uh, in the area, uh, as well, uh, except for basically the two adjoining neighbors, uh, which are, uh, smaller, uh, buildings. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, um, we'll hold our questions until we hear from the opposition, okay? Then we'll have you back. All right, uh, Mr. DeCosta, are you on the line?
Yes, my name is Angelo DeCosta, I live at thirteen C fourth, and my fellow, Alan Gibb, will, uh, speak on behalf of me.
Okay, so I'm gonna need him to identify himself, and after he's done so, I'll start the clock, and he has five minutes.
My name is Alan Gibb, and I'm a graduate engineer, I've worked in construction for eight years, and for the last twelve, three years, I've been the manager of planted sites for a interior school board, responsible for the operation, maintenance and construction of sixty-one school buildings, I've involved in the construction of eight new schools, and over twelve additions, including a new administration building, so, lots of work with architects, engineers, and planning issues. The current submission asks for relief from ten separate chapters and sections of two bylaws, number ten is excessive, since the property in question does not contain any rights aways, easements, physical elevation changes, or any circum, special conditions that require special accommodations, in five cases, submission does not ask for a variance, but it eliminate, asks for the elimination of one parking, required under bylaw four thirty-eight, and five sixty, and sixty-nine, and eliminating the total west setback. As the committee is aware, under most codes governing variances, approval of variances must not result in a public health and safety hazard, must not grant special privilege to the property owner, in other words, when a variance is granted, any such property owner with similar site conditions should be able to obtain a similar variance, this criteria is often addressed by citing precedents, since there appears to be no special circumstances regarding this lot, we argue that there could be a special privilege, or by precedent, parking and property setbacks would not be necessary for any future development under these two bylaws, this is a new, a new area for development, and so this sets a big precedent going forward. It may stretch to link safety with parking, but there is not parking, we don't visit here because we cannot get a parking spot or a permit, uh, so we don't visit our, uh, our daughter, uh, just because of location, so I disagree with parking, it is not the role of the municipality to create residential parking, clearly this is the role of developer, it is also responsibly the developer and architect to design a structure that is compliant with the bylaws of the property, bylaw required parking space for each dwelling unit, has stated one spot, that the current existing occupant doesn't have parking spot, so this could be grandfathered, but it implied that the three additional part, units would require parking spots, elimination setbacks and safety issue could lead to other issues that affect building code, proposed building is to be built on the lot line as per submitted drawings, and creates safety issues to the adjacent property to west, proposed basement is detailed on drawing north elevation, sets the elevation one point si- one point six feet below, or one point five, under a rubble foundation of thirteen C fourth, the also, drawing also shows an additional excavation of four feet, which makes it one point six meters below a rubble foundation of thirteen C fourth, building on the lot line allows no opportunity for, uh, soil, underpinning of the foundations, no footing, kind of protection, such as shoring, that sort of thing, in, in the construction, we couldn't use a concrete foundation, because there's no room for farmwork, if a person was to use a, a masonry block, for example, it would be built against the rub, the ground, and therefore, uh, not allow opportunities for things like, uh, damp proofing, and those sort of things that are required, especially with an occupied basement space, this would create, uh, an opportunity for mold growth, and make the basement not, um, occupiable. Lack of side setbacks creates other proportions on the rear and side and front balconies, is the role of the architect to design a building proposed within the bylaw, there's no need for the rear architectural balconies, and therefore need, no need for the second fa- subfa- variance under ten point five forty fifty, the land, the balcony is not required, landing and stairs are required to provide a secondary means of address, a fire escape, but there's no need for a balcony as designed and proposed, due to the height of the building, the balconies are permitted, as a minimum, should be built with a requ- to the required setback by shortening, and have end walls to exte- extend at least point three millimeter or meters past the leaning edge to allow privacy to the neighboring properties, front exterior stairs could be moved to eliminate the front setback, this could be accommodated by moving the front door point six meters, or twenty-four inches, this is just half the width of the front door. The reduced and minimize, eliminated setbacks and double front entry makes placement of four hydro meters, four gas meters, and twelve waste and recycled containers a challenge, and still allow for access to the rear apartment. Looking at the neighborhood, houses are built on property, on, uh, sorry, houses...
Um, Mr. Gibb?
On property line, common, yes?
Mr. Gibb?
Yes.
You're over five minutes, I need you to wrap up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure, uh, we don't believe that this meets the four tests, uh, we, there's been no attempt here by the architect to build or design a building inside the, uh, bylaw, and therefore we have requested it be rejected.
Okay. Thank you very much. Panel members, do you have any questions of the speaker?
No.
No? Okay. We'll go to the next, uh, speaker, um, Mr. Brailal? Hello?
Uh, yes, uh, Brithal.
Hi.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can, can you please identify yourself, name and address for the record?
Uh, yes, my name is, uh, Calvin Brithal, I live at, uh, fifteen C fourth, uh...
Okay, the clock's starting now, you have no more than five minutes.
Uh, yeah, I echo a lot, uh, with the last speaker, uh, uh, covered, uh, but, uh, a few things I want to touch on is, uh, is parking is, uh, is a big problem in, in our area, because it's a one-side street parking, and, uh, it serves both sides, uh, houses, uh, from both sides of the street, so, uh, we are always short of parking, also, uh, we find that there's a lot of people buying temporary, uh, uh, parking, that's parking in the street also for, uh, for overnight parking, so a lot of times, we have to park two, three, four blocks away from, uh, from our street, uh, so I think that's a huge concern, having, uh, that many units, uh, bring in more colors. Uh, having a, the second thing is having a, a new rental unit may impact the, the value of our properties, uh, causing loss and value of the property, um, I've spoken to a real estate agent, uh, who said that, uh, depending on what's happening, it could be between fifteen to twenty percent, uh, as per the, uh, real estate agent, um, and the last thing is, uh, it's important that, uh, that, uh, the owners understand that the laneway at the back is private property, do have people using that laneway illegally, uh, so the laneway is not to be used by that property at all, because it is private property.
Okay. Panel members, do you have any questions of the speaker?
No.
Okay, seeing none, thank you very much. Mr. Locasano, can you please speak to, only to the issues raised?
Yes, um, with regards to the, uh, the setbacks on the side of the, uh, on the side of the house to, in reference to the first speaker, um, the existing house, uh, originally, right now, uh, only sits eight inches away, uh, with regards to the safety, I know committee doesn't really address this, but we use, uh, we design condos, um, and, uh, we've done shoring, uh, designs right up to the property line, which is very typical, uh, in the downtown core of Toronto, and also, we've done houses, um, with shoring details, uh, with, uh, rubble foundations next door, so I don't think that's really an issue. Uh, with regards to the rear balconies, yes, the rear balconies are not a requirement, but it is a requirement in this case, in order for access to exit, uh, to create a second means of exit for the units, uh, with regards to the privacy screening, we can, um, put that as, as a condition, uh, that they typically, we do a one point five meter screen, uh, along the, uh, west side and east, and east side, if required, uh, with regards to the door to get rid of the variance, this is a, because of the width of the building, this is a single side-loaded stair, so, uh, in order to move the, the entry door, uh, two feet away from the property line, would cause major disruption on the inside of the stair exiting, and also, the unit, uh, would not be, uh, would not be favorable, um, again, with regards to a laneway that he's, um, the second speaker was refer, referring to, um, I am not aware of any laneway on that side, I know there's a laneway, uh, down the one side, but nothing across the back of our building, um, but we have no intent of using any laneway legally, um, with regards to the parking, we understand that the parking, uh, we don't have, uh, parking, and again, the majority of houses in the area don't have parking either, um, so we, we understand that, uh, there is an issue with the parking, but, again, a lot of these rental units, a lot of the tenants, uh, don't drive as well, so this is, uh, um, this is what we've proposed, uh, for this type of building, and with, again, back to the setbacks, uh, if you look at a lot of the, uh, houses in the area, and the way they're set on their property, we're well, uh, within, or even, we're providing even more on the east side than most of the houses, uh, in the area are doing now.
Okay.
That's it, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Uh, panel members, do you have any questions for Mr. Locasano?
I have one question, so it appears that your proposed building will be the steepest, I mean, the, the longest one, and the deepest one, and the neighbor, on that street, what is?
No, that's not true. The, uh, the deepest, uh, we are at, um, twenty point eight six, because it is a four plus, so it's only fourteen meters rather than seventeen meters, the, uh, the deepest property is actually number fourteen at twenty-three point zero six, number ten is at twenty-one point zero one, number twelve is at twenty-two point four, number sixteen is twenty-three point two, number twenty is twenty point four five, um, and number seventeen is twenty point four, uh, five four. So we are definitely not the longest building on the block.
Oh, I see, and part of it is about, is caused by the, the staircase, am I right?
Uh, no, I don't, I don't think the staircase is part of that, uh, length. It doesn't, it does include, it's really just the ground floor, because the second and third floor actually step back, so it's, it's only the ground floor that is that, uh, twenty point eight six depth, the second and third floor do step back considerably. Five foot, uh, five foot eight.
Oh, I see, but on your elevation, the staircase are basically running a vertical?
Correct. We're trying to keep the staircase as narrow as possible, in order to still, uh, have some views for the, uh, for the units to the rear yard, because as you can see in the rear yard, um, it's a funny shaped lot, it's an L-shaped, uh, which is heavily treed, uh, and is actually gonna be, uh, a nice landscape area for the, for the tenants, and green space, uh, which we intend to, uh, to maintain. That was actually the, the, also the reason for the front yard, is because we've had a, we have an existing tree, uh, on that front yard, um, that we would like to leave as green space as well.
Okay, I was trying to understand that there is about eight meters of space for the balcony and the staircase, and it's all open?
Yeah, the reason for that is because if you look on, uh, the ground floor plan, the, the minimum, because you're exiting in front of another unit, the building code allows a three-meter, um, distance away from any glass openings from a fire exit, so we had to keep...
You don't, you don't want to put a fire shutter there, and that's why you push that, that's...
Yeah, there, there's no point putting a, well, again, you can't put a fire shutter on an operable door, which is leading to an exit, so you can't do that either, um, so the, the, the issue was to probably...
Anyway.
Well, no, you can't, yeah, again, you can't use fire, see, if you use a fire-rated door, but then none of the windows at the back can be operable, because we could use firelight glass, but the problem with that is, it can't be operable.
Operable to high, so, yes, you can't have them operable.
You can't operable, and these are the only windows...
Okay.
...that we really have in these units.
Okay.
Okay.
Can we move to the variances? Like I, 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 has that answered your question, Mr. Chang?
Uh, yeah, it does, I just want to know why they have to build that, uh, staircase so far away from the building?
Okay.
And making it, uh, dear building, thanks.
Okay, great. Any further questions related to the variances, panel members?
Uh, Mr. Locasano, can you just remind me, uh, we've heard neighbors say there's no parking available on the street, is it permit parking, do you know if there are permits available?
As far as I know, um, the, the, uh, the new owners, uh, did check, uh, online to see if there is, uh, permit, uh, parking available, um, again, I've been there multiple times, I've always had a, a parking space there, but that doesn't mean, uh, that there are not shortage of parking, but there are many side streets in the area that we, we know our, uh, parking is available, especially along Brock, uh, where there's, uh, there is quite a bit of parking available.
Okay, any further questions? Seeing none? Okay, let's, uh, take it into committee. Okay, any discussion?
Madam Chairman, I, we interrupted the discussion with Mr. Chang and the applicant about stairs, and I appreciate why that conversation was taking place, because I think the back deck and the staircases are a huge imposition into the neighborhood. I'm personally unable to support that solution to this application. I think that those decks and the stairway, stairways, which in fact are extensions of the deck, because in cases of being used for parties, the stairways themselves are seating, I think that's a huge imposition on neighboring properties. I don't think this is a reasonable solution, and I will be unable to support this application, primarily because of that particular component of the project.
Any further questions?
Notwithstanding the decks, I have concerns about the parking, so I feel, we've heard that there is, you know, limited parking available, and this is introducing four units, so I have concerns about the parking on this one, and that's where I am unable to support because of that.
Okay, just to add, my concern was actually the exterior wall height, because I think, yeah, it's a bit of a box. The depth does kind of fit in with the surrounding neighborhood, but I think several of the issues that you have mentioned, and some of the issues raised by Mr. Chang, so I would agree that this is really a little bit of an overbuild on the site. Any other...
So, Madam Chairman, if you're, if...
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
I was going to bring forward a motion. Mr. Chang, did you want to make a comment first?
I think this struck my mind. I think the staircase, I mean, in order for that particular bedroom to have an operable window and intruding to all of the neighbor's privacy, it's not better to manage, so I wouldn't be able to...
So, Madam Chairman, if you're open to a motion, I'd like to bring forward a motion to reject the application.
Please. Okay, so your motion is to refuse the application?
Yes, based on the concerns that we've already mentioned.
Okay, and Ms. Valentini, are you seconding?
I'm seconding.
Okay, so, motion to refuse moved by Mr. Niffel, seconded by Ms. Valentini. All in favor. The application has been unanimously refused. So, that ends the morning session. We're going to recess until 3 o'clock, and at that point, we'll start with item 21, which is 78 Dale Avenue. Okay, see you later.